All right, it's 6 o'clock. It's time to get us started. So, welcome to the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 22nd. It's 6 o'clock on the nose. Kim, could you please do us a roll call?
Actually Karen will do it for you. I don't have the agenda.
Councilmember Getzelt?
Here.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Here.
Councilmember Lintell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark? She's muted. Mayor Kerr?
Yeah, here. Before we get started, I just want to double check that the video is working correctly.
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. And I also want to take a moment to thank Kim for almost 20 years of service to the city. I'm constantly amazed by your breadth of knowledge. She always responds to any question I have like instantaneous, whether it's financial or historical. God knows how many transitions you've weathered through the city and within City Hall. We will miss your financial prowess, your beautiful and informative acorns, and your humor. I wish you many blessings as you venture into your retirement along with your daughter and grandson. Everyone, please join me in thanking Kim for her service.
Thank you for Kim.
Yay.
Thank you, everybody. It's been my pleasure.
And before we get into the agenda, I would like to ask our city manager to review all the updated items in the addendum that went out last evening.
Thank you, Mayor. The addendum that was published yesterday evening contained three items. Those items were a revised leave of absence request for the city manager. The revision related to the start date and went from a hard start date of September 28th to an undetermined start date. And I'll be happy to elaborate on that when we get to that agenda item. The second piece that was included in the packet amendment was the contract for the acting city manager. And the third item was the comment letter received from the California Native Plant Society regarding the South Boundary Road agenda item.
Okay, thank you. And now let's go out to public comment. Anyone that would like to address an issue not on the agenda can do so now. Please keep your comments to three minutes and no action will be taken. So, please raise your hand in the...
I'm sorry, did we want to do a roll call? I'm sorry, I totally skipped it. Sorry, sorry.
John's here.
No, actually I'm not, so yeah.
So, if anybody has a comment, please raise your hand in the technology, not on the screen, please, so we can all see you because we're going to have two screens. So, I see Kim Shirley.
Hello, Council. Kim Shirley, Baxter Place. I want to tell you about what happened this last weekend. This month, the California Coastal Commission was sponsoring a coastal cleanup Saturday throughout the month of September. Instead of having large groups gather to clean the beach, they were advocating for smaller groups of people to clean their neighborhoods and waterways since the trash would ultimately lead to the pollution, to the ocean, including our National Marine Sanctuary. So, in honor of the coastal cleanup this past Saturday, Friends of Arroyo del Rey, which is a subcommittee of Sustainable Delray Oaks, in conjunction with the Environmental Club of MPC, gathered to clean our creek and its surrounding areas. We had over a dozen residents and a couple of students who masked up and came out with their gloves using buckets and grabbers, gathered over 60 pounds of trash. We did a clean sweep of the creek from the Frog Pond and General Jim Moore Boulevard down to City Hall, the park, along Angeles, and down to Safeway. I wanted to especially thank the organizers of this event, Kim Marie Hansen and Kevin Raskoff, who are the chairs of Friends of Arroyo del Rey. Kevin is also the faculty advisor for the Environmental Club, who offers for everyone who attended. I also want to thank the residents who attended and especially Scott Walts, who used hip waders to get heavier items out of the creek between the Gardens Center and Safeway, along with Gary Krieger, who helped him pull out those items and dispose of the various pipes, small motor, and metal pieces that they found in the creek. In a couple of hours' time, the community gathered. We made a big difference in the health of our outdoor environments that we all enjoy and ultimately are protecting the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary from increased pollution. So, I want to thank all of them for their work and dedication to the environment. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. I see Douglas McKenzie.
Good evening. This is Douglas McKenzie, reporting from 16 Sausalito Avenue in Delray Oaks. And I'm happy tonight to bring you the first episode of the Three Minute Report. The Three Minute Report is an investigative show focused on the governance of the City of Delray Oaks, you know, the Monterey Peninsula Airport District. In this episode of our show, we report on some of the findings of our months-long investigation into the governments of Delray Oaks and begin with the story of Councilmember John Gagliotti's violation of a sign ordinance during the primary election season earlier this year. Excuse me. On January 28th, Councilmember Gagliotti was issued an administrative citation by the city that cited his violation of Delray Oaks ordinance 1759-220, Section 9. As you may recall, Section 9 of the old ordinance provided that the total area of signs on any property in residential districts could not exceed eight square feet. Councilmember Gagliotti had a large Steve McShane sign posted on his fence facing Canyon del Rey, as well as three lawn signs around his house that together exceeded the eight-square-foot limitation. Councilmember Gagliotti was fined $100 for his violation of the city ordinance. On February 27th, Councilmember Gagliotti appealed the administrative citation. In response to a question from this reporter, Councilmember Gagliotti said that he paid the advance deposit of $100 to the city as required by the Delray Oaks ordinance 119-120, Section B. Despite being cited by the city, Councilmember Gagliotti continued to display the offending signs throughout the primary election season. As far as this reporter knows, a hearing to contest the administrative citation issued to Councilmember Gagliotti has not been held, even though Delray Oaks ordinance 119-120, Section B provides that a hearing before a hearing officer must be set for a date that is not less than 15 days and not more than 60 days from the date that the request for hearing is filed. In other words, the hearing in Councilmember Gagliotti's case should have happened by the end of April. It is a considered opinion of this reporter that, one, the Delray Oaks city manager did not enforce the city's ordinances in this instance, and, two, that the city manager gave preferential treatment to Councilmember Gagliotti and for $100 paid to the city allowed the posting of a large Steve McShane sign facing Canyon del Rey throughout the primary election season. Our investigation has revealed that the conduct of City Hall in this instance reflects a general disregard for city ordinances and agreements. But three minutes is not much time at all, so this concludes today's broadcast of the Three Minute Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. George Jackshaw. You're muted.
I want to thank Kim for all her service and mine particularly. I come to her several times to ask for help and with a smile, she's always given me, oh yeah, help. So, thank you, Kim. I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome, George.
I need all the help I can get and now it's Karen's turn.
Is that it, George?
That's it.
Okay. Gary Krieger.
Hello, Gary Krieger, it's Rick Windell. I just want to follow what Kim was saying very briefly. Scott and I did take turns with the waders going down through the creek. It was a lot of fun. But, one thing we did find, there were several things, big items, we could not pull out. And the thought was, just something to think about maybe for the city manager and maybe Ron. We got that big, beautiful, giant, brand-new dump truck sitting down there on the old RV park. And I think that and some heavy-duty chains and we could pull a couple of big things that are kind of silted over and stuck in the bottom of that creek, we could pull them out. So, just something to think about in the future and we will find a working party for you. If Ron can get the truck down there with some chains, we'll find the bodies to help. But there were a few things that just, we weren't going to get out of the creek, no matter how much we dug. So, anyway, just wanted to put that out there, something to think about, maybe try to schedule for the future. Be nice to finish the job. It was nice to get done what we got done, but be even better to go back and finish it. Thanks.
Thanks, Gary. I see Mary Solcang.
Hi, my name is Mary Solcang. I live at Hillwell Place. I wanted to congratulate Kim on her pending in retirement. I've been retired for a few years now and really truly enjoy it. I hope you have as much fun as I'm having. The other thing that I wanted to talk about tonight was this particular page that was a one-pager, one-sentence that was in the agenda. I don't know if you could see that, but the sign was, "There were no unpaid bills as of August 31st, 2020." And that's great news. It really popped out to me. It just really makes us look like we're in great financial state. But unfortunately, it doesn't give us a hint that the city has an unfunded financial liability due to the 2014 lawsuit resulting from the last attempt to develop the four-door property. That settlement cost $1.2 million, none of which has been paid, nothing of which is mentioned in the city budget or other financial reports. Yes, you can find it by reading the annual audit. It's, you know, just some light bedtime reading for us. It's included as a footnote. The payment schedule in the settlement is quite interesting. There are two funds. $500,000 is not interest-bearing and $700,000 accrues interest at the rate of 5% per year, make up the total of $1.2 million. Now, once the payments start, the non-interest-bearing $500,000 must be paid first before any of the payments are applied to the $700,000. This one-liner in the agenda packet is accurate. There are no payments due, so there are no unpaid bills. However, the debt just continues to grow. The original $700,000 is now close to $1 million for a total liability of $1.5 million. It's truly a remarkable piece of feel-good paper, that one-liner in the agenda packet. And as long as we don't have to see anything about this financial encumbrance when we look at the budget or the agenda packet, I guess we can all pretend we're in great financial shape. What I would like to see is a footnote in our agenda packets when we're talking about our financial situation that recognizes this debt. I think that that's an important thing for us to keep us mindful of the debt and for people who may be new to attending city council meetings to know what our real picture does include in encumbrance. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. I'm sorry, I should have moved you to the consent agenda item, which is next, but my dogs were going crazy because my postman showed up. So, next time, we will make that an appropriate shift. Any other public comments? No? All right. So, let's move on to the consent agenda. Anyone want to pull any item? Anybody on the council would like to pull any item from the consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry, I see a Ken Rutherford. Did I not, did I close public comment too quickly?
Mayor, I thought I saw Ken Rutherford and Dennis Allen.
Oh, my apologies. Ken?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank staff and especially Karen. I know that you've all worked hard to make sure that Delray Oaks is complying with the new state ADU legislation that's effective 2020. And I applied for getting an ADU permitted. And despite all the encumbrances with the COVID crisis and everything else, Karen really has worked with me and Joe Headley, the inspector for the city, just was very patient with me and helped work with me on this permitting process. And I'm happy to report that I picked up the final permit today from Karen. And she really has been very helpful despite not being in the office as much as she would like. I'd also just like to congratulate Kim as well. And following on what Mary just said, I know that we have that debt, but I also hear other times that we're doing pretty well financially compared to other cities. And if that's the case, I'd like to suggest that we consider a retirement bonus for Kim and also reverse the no-cola for the rest of the staff for this year if we are in fact financially to do that. It's a difficult time for everyone, but I know how hard they work. Thanks much.
Thanks, Ken. That's nice. So, I don't see Dennis's hand up. Oh, there we go. Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment on the fact that there is the item on the agenda and that we, both Ken and Mary, have now brought it up, but we'll bring it up again. I'd like to comment on the financials when that comes up.
Okay. So, we went back to public comment. Any other public comment? Kim, Karen, Dino, can you double-check? I'm not seeing any hands.
I don't see any hands.
Okay. So, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. We're going to go into the consent agenda. Do any of the council members wish to pull a consent agenda item? All right. Anyone in the public want to pull an agenda item? Okay, Dennis?
Yes, so that we can properly comment on it, I'd like to pull the monthly reports on the financials.
Okay.
That would be item 3B, C, 3.
3B, C, okay. Any other, anybody else want to pull a consent agenda item? Okay. Let's go to 3B, is it 3B, 3, financials. Dennis, question, comment?
Not a question, just a comment. Mary, I think Mary's right on. We need to have a little bit more visibility on that. It does show up on our balance sheets, but it doesn't get much visibility until we get the annual audit report and then there is some discussion on it. As with regard to our financial condition, yes, we are in better shape than we've been in the past. We, I think, thanks to the efforts of the past council and the understanding, the support of citizens, we were able to pass ordinances that helped secure more revenues for the city to begin to address our debt. And we do have debt. The strategy for paying off the debt is a little bit complicated by the fact that we have to pay off the non-interest-bearing debt first, and that's $500,000, as Mary correctly pointed out. So, now that we have some reserves, I hope that the council will seriously take up this issue and come up with a plan for paying off that longstanding debt settlement. And for perspective, remember that what the developer wanted from us was $17 million. That was his coming endpoint. And we settled for the 1.2 million or, I can't remember the exact number now, but it got settled out of court, saved us a lot of lawyer fees in the long run. We do have that burden to carry and we've got to address it. Thank you very much, Mary, for pointing that out. And as regard to our financial health, we're healthier than we were. We still have a ways to go.
Thank you, Dennis. Douglas?
Yes, as long as Dennis brought it up, I noted that for June, the attorney's fees were close to $34,000. That seems like a lot of money to me. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Any other comments on the financials? I just had some generic, actually it ties to that. I want to acknowledge our city manager and Kim for the addition of the restricted pots to the funding page that are now outlined on the cash fund balance report. It's the same document we were talking about. This includes funding from FORA for the South Boundary Road improvements and our PG&E undergrounding account of $382,000. I haven't checked on costs, but I'm not sure how far that'll get us. And it's interesting. I also had a note about, I would also like to see the debt listed as well. And then additionally, on that note, the finance committee meetings will now be noticed and open to the public. We generally meet November to review the audit, February for a mid-year budget review, and spring to review the next fiscal year's budget. So, all are welcome to those and Karen will be noticing them, just like any other meeting. So, and then the other thing on the consent items for me that stood out was there were only three response incidences for our fire department. So, people are being safe and I can assume healthy. So, thank you. Any other comments about the financial status? I am not seeing any hands. So, what I'd like to do is, there was no action on item 3B, 3, so I'd like to come back to the council and I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve.
I second.
All right. All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
I think we need a roll call.
Let's do a roll call vote. Okay.
Councilmember Getzelt?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Lintell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So, it passes unanimously. Thank you for the conversation. So, we're going to move on to new business, item number 4A. We're going to receive an update and provide direction on South Boundary Road project. I'll turn it over to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Erin Harwin here from Denise Duffy and Associates, our contract planning staff and environmental review staff, and Andy Hunter, our lead project engineer from Witson Engineers on the South Boundary Road project. They'll be helping present tonight and answer questions. Mayor and council, members of the public, this is the city's first presentation to you all on what is the city's largest capital project in its history. And what we would like to do today is provide you the result with a little bit of background of our initial due diligence after taking over the project. So, Erin, would you like to share screen and we'll start up?
Sure, will do.
Thank you.
Can everybody see that?
All right. Next slide, please.
Might I ask that everyone mute during the presentation? Just for consideration. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'd like to cover the project overview. Engineering design by Andy, environmental review by Erin. Come back to you and present staff recommendations and next steps. And then we'd like to spend as much time as the council and public would like answering questions and answers. I think it's important to frame right up front that there are an amazing amount of unknowns yet. That what we're presenting tonight is an initial preliminary presentation based on the results of about two months of due diligence between the city team. And so, to manage some expectations with regard to the level of detail on questions that we're going to be able to answer, that is the depth of our work right now. But having said that, we have some tremendous news and some great progress and we look forward to sharing that. So, on the project overview, the one important thing that your city team looks forward to doing as we move forward is adjusting the narrative on this project from one where it is a FORA-led CIP project that's being foisted on the jurisdiction to one that is managed by the jurisdiction with input from the public and is a tremendous opportunity to improve the safety of pedestrians, bicyclists, and automobile traffic at the intersection of South Boundary Road and General Jim Moore and along down South Boundary Road to Rancho Sausalito. The, as you know, FORA was the lead agency for this project. They began the General Jim Moore Improvements project in 2005 and the South Boundary Road Improvements project in 2010. Next slide. What I'd like to do is orient the public to the project location. The City of Delray Oaks is shown here in green. The Highway 218 can be seen bisecting the city. And in red, what is shown here is the current proposed alignment of the South Boundary Road intersection with General Jim Moore, which moves that intersection north along Jim Moore and then bends back down to the current alignment and then out to Rancho Sausalito Road at the end there. That is the project that we're talking about. It's a total of 7,300 feet of roadway and it falls primarily within the City of Delray Oaks, but also extends into the City of Monterey at its end near Rancho Sausalito. Slide. So, why are we doing this now? In December of 2017, FORA initiated the completion of design and construction and bid documents for this project. June 30th, FORA dissolved and passed the project to the city. The month of July was really spent ensuring that all documents were received and filed and organized and that all funds were received and placed into escrow accounts and into our general fund accounts, depending on the type of money that that was, to the tune of $8.8 million. And as the mayor alluded to, we've added those lines to the cash fund balance to show those funds in. And so, what we had as a city staff was a responsibility to take control of the project and an opportunity to look at it with a fresh set of eyes. And that's exactly what we did. And what I asked Andy and Erin to do was to look at a variety of options for this project, hearing the comments from our public as well as from the council. And what we asked them to do was look at the existing alignment, meaning the proposed project alignment, with a stop signaled intersection, stop sign controlled intersection, a signalized intersection, and a roundabout intersection. We also asked staff to look at, I also asked staff to look at moving the intersection of South Boundary Road and General Jim Moore farther to the north and looking at a signalized intersection option there and a roundabout intersection option there. And finally, we looked at an option where if no new road is built, what would the cost and process look like if we just reconstructed the existing two-lane alignment with the same stop-controlled intersection as it exists today? And as we started to move through the months of August and into September, it became clear to us that, and surprisingly so and pleasantly so, that our initial sort of intuitive sense that building the existing alignment as proposed in the 2010 project would be the most feasible to the city, we learned quite a different conclusion with our initial staff work. And that was that an alignment that takes the road intersection with General Jim Moore... that was that an alignment that takes the road intersection with General Jim Moore to the north and builds a roundabout where General Jim Moore widens into four lanes, and anybody that's familiar with that area of the road knows that there is a large amount of paved asphalt area there where it expands, and then running the alignment of the road down to South Boundary was the most feasible from a financial perspective, from a time perspective, and from an environmental impact perspective as it related to minimizing any impact on state and federally listed endangered species, specifically the avoidance of impact on seaside birdspeak. And so as we realized this, we wanted to bring this and share it with the community, and we wanted to specifically give our council the opportunity to give us direction to continue to explore that route. So that's why we're here tonight. It's the result of a couple of months of due diligence and taking control of the project. The project team of Andy, Erin, Alex, and I, with Jeff Hoin intimately involved for the last 45 days or so, is very agile, doing great work, and I look forward to turning this over to Andy for the next portion here. Go ahead, Andy.
Hi, everyone. Andy Hunter here from Witson Engineers. As to grab onto what Dino was saying there, I'm going to cover some of the engineering design aspects that we've been looking into over the last few months with the new set of eyes, but also preceding that. So as Dino was mentioning, in 2010, there were 30% design plans complete for a project that shifted the alignment of the existing South Boundary Road to the north. In 2017, our office, Witson Engineers, inherited this project after a question of quality from FORA, and we were tasked with moving this project forward to 100% plans for construction. You know, part of taking a preliminary design forward, it involves some due diligence, involves looking at refinements to the design, how to develop it, check all the assumptions that go into, you know, the design that's been handed to here, and look for opportunities for value engineering and the edges, that, you know, getting down into those details. And some of those details did include the spin of former military base. There are munitions and explosives of concern that have some soil management restrictions about how the earth can move around from one tract of land to the other, you know, as the terminology phrases that. So we had to, you know, take this 30% design and take this holistic approach of how the earthwork would incorporate along the length of this roadway. It's nearly a mile and a half of improvement, and, you know, consider all these, you know, constraints and opportunities that were presented to us. Part of that included, you know, considering some preliminary design modifications to help, you know, value engineer the road and, you know, consider how we can deal with those munitions, or MECC as it's referred to, in a safe and effective manner. We also got the consideration for a roundabout intersection, and whether that was appropriate in this case, you know, versus a signal versus a stop sign, all with the goal of reducing costs and providing a safer road and less environmental impact. So Erin, if you can go to the next slide. So the cross-section on the screen is what we inherited. This is from the 2010 plans, the 30% plans. To highlight some of the numbers here, this would have been in a new 80-foot wide right away, so reading from the top down, 66 feet of pavement. So out of that 66 feet, there would be attached sidewalks of five foot wide on either end, wide shoulders, wide lanes, and in the center, a turn lane or, you know, special event lane. So what that means is if there is an event at Laguna Seca, it's with some traffic control, the road could be converted to lanes in or two lanes out, you know, on those special events, but otherwise it would be one lane in the center area used for turning, you know, into adjacent parcels. Underneath there, you can see that the existing road is about 25 feet wide, and so this was going to have some widening, you know, necessary. And as I was mentioning about the being four-doored and the munitions concern here, you can imagine if, you know, the world's not flat and the terrain in this area is not flat either, and so this would require us taking a corridor, a road section here that is wider than the existing road, and how to, you know, fit that onto the existing ground. So Erin, go to the next slide. This was a cross-section, and we looked at several, but this is one that rose to the top for a few reasons. First off, it still included the same facilities. We have one lane in either direction, and we still have the special event or turn lane in the center, consistent with the original project requirements. But we were able to narrow those lanes, put on a diet, as some would say, 11-foot lanes instead of the 12, and the 14-foot median instead of the 16 that it was. So these narrower lanes allowed us to shrink the pavement down. We also then, instead of having the wide shoulders and attached sidewalk attached to the roadway, looked at separating this into a shared use path on the north side of the road that could float up and down, see the dash lines there, so we can raise that path up and down, it's have a different profile elevation than the roadway, and better conform to our edge conditions, better conform to the terrain, and minimize the earthwork, minimize the grading that would be needed to fit this roadway in. So that existing 25-foot road really isn't widening all that much where the roadway is, and we're just putting in a shared use path on the edges. This facility here in the center here says landscape swell. What we mean by that is stormwater would, instead of being piped and, you know, hard-piped in, putting storm drain pipes and directed elsewhere, we'd be able to provide bio-swells or retention areas, so that stormwater directly off the road can have opportunities to get into the ground. You know, there's some areas of sand around Fort Ord and hypercollating soil that's ready to accept that water. So a little low-impact, you know, type design. And the separated paths here, you know, and Erin, if you go to our next slide here. This provides opportunities for connections to future trails. So this is one of Fred Watson's great maps of FORTAG, and representing some proposed and alternative alignments for FORTAG trails. And so if this shared use path got developed on the north side of South Boundary Road, there's opportunities to connect to other trail facilities that would head off in that direction. So we've had the opportunity to meet with the FORTAG team and just on a preliminary basis at this point, and look forward to doing that further to help integrate, you know, those projects together. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Andy.
With you.
Sounds good. Thanks, Andy. So as Andy's moving forward with his due diligence on the proposed or the preliminary design modifications, DDNA looked at the existing approved CEQA and NEPA documentation completed for the General Jim Moore Eucalyptus Road project, which included the roundabout, or sorry, the intersection at South Boundary and General Jim, and then also looked at the environmental document from the South Boundary Road Improvement Project. And while the CEQA and NEPA, California Environmental Quality Act and National Environmental Policy Act, compliance has been completed, those environmental documents require the implementation of a number of mitigation measures, including but not limited to compliance with State and Federal Endangered Species Act, which require obtaining incidental take permits from the federal U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and state California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And the two species of concern within our project area are the California Tiger Salamander and the seaside birdspeak. What was interesting about this document and what's been happening and now has terminated with the dissolution of FORA is that FORA was working with the local jurisdictions to obtain basewide incidental take permits for these species and others through a basewide four-doored habitat conservation plan, which you may have heard me speak about previously. However, in June, the jurisdictions decided not to move forward with that process anymore. And so everyone, all the jurisdictions, including the city, has to go on it on their own. And this was a significant change in circumstances for the city. Not only has the city been relying on FORA for many years to complete that process, now everyone has to go at it on their own, and it's a very expensive, time-consuming process. And what the environmental document said is if that basewide permit is not in place when you, when the project goes under construction, the city and other jurisdictions would need to get their own permits. So it gives you the option in that document to have those options available. But this was a consideration that we really wanted to look into a little bit more. In addition, the 2010 alignment may result in impacts to the native plant reserve one north, which is located on the northeastern corner of the intersection of South Boundary and General Jim Moore, and the city is currently discussing that preserve with the California Native Plant Society. So we at DDNA, working with Andy and city, other city staff, we took a fresh holistic environmental review of these preliminary design modifications, given the 10, 15 years that have passed since the environmental documents were prepared, and really looked into this permitting process for seaside birdspeak. And what we found through discussions with the state California Department of Fish and Wildlife, discussions with UC biologists over at the Fort Ord Natural Reserve, looking at potential, the potential need to obtain mitigation land and do restoration work, what we found is that the permitting process for seaside birdspeak was going to be very lengthy and costly, feasible but lengthy and costly, which is why we're doing this whole basewide thing in the first place, but that's another story. So what we wanted to do is do some focused protocol-level surveys for this plant in the vicinity of the project, specifically to the north of the proposed alignment, to see if, you know, hey, can we check this one off the list? Can we avoid impacts? And lo and behold, none were observed this last summer when we went out there. And so shifting the alignment to the north would avoid impacts to seaside birdspeak and avoid the ESA permitting process with the state. And, you know, taking that requirement out of the process really results in cheaper, faster process, and also reducing environmental impacts, which is very important. And I would say that, you know, our budget, our costs are already over our existing budget. So as Andy spoke to, you know, value engineering versus, and in addition, looking at ways to reduce environmental mitigation was really the way to go. So I don't expect you all to be able to read this. What we did do is include a PDF of this table in the agenda packet. So what I'd like to do is talk through what Dino referred to as some of these options that we looked at, and I'll go across this top row. And so what, option one consists of what Andy spoke to, this modified road cross-section, the road on a diet. So taking that 2010 alignment, giving it a diet, giving it that safety improvements and roundabout that Andy described. Option two is a modified road section with a roundabout shifted north with a roundabout or signalized intersection. So we left that option open, you know, we're still feeling this all out. Option three is the modified road cross-section with the 2010 alignment with a signalized intersection, as Dino spoke about as well. Option four is the existing alignment. What if we did nothing that would disturb any vegetation? What if we just fixed some potholes, did some paving, did some striping, not really disturbing anything that would require any permits or additional environmental review? And lastly, what if we just stuck with what Andy was given at 30%? You know, what if we brought those 30% plans that were evaluated back in 2005, 2010, and brought that forward? So no road on a diet, it would have all of the bells and whistles that were identified early on, but it would be bigger and wouldn't have the separate bike path. So from an environmental standpoint, what we did is, with each of these options, we looked at what CEQA, what additional environmental review might be required under CEQA, and it varies. Specifically with the northern shift, we might consider doing a supplemental mitigated negative declaration to tear off the previous environmental document and move that along. And so we provided cost and timeline. We looked at whether mitigation measures would still be required, and of course, looking at, you know, with each of these options, what incidental take permits might be required. And again, you guys, we can delve into with questions after the presentation. I won't read every line to you, but that PDF is in your agenda packet. And so now I'll pass it over to Andy to discuss some of the construction considerations he considered while looking at these different options.
Okay, thanks, Erin. So under the construction consideration category here, you know, property negotiations refers to the acquisition of right-of-way, and all except the number four that would, you know, keep the existing right-of-way as is, all would require, you know, some negotiations. So those are yes. The construction support plan, so MECC, that's the munitions, explosives of concern, that is a placeholder price that we're estimating for others to provide a construction support plan and make sure that when contractors are digging, that they're doing so safely, and if something is found, that it is appropriately dealt with. The construction document cost is the cost to proceed with all the design plans that would be involved with this. As you work your way, you know, looking at each one of these alternatives, the cost for number one is less than two and three, because number two means that it's the road shifting north means to do more design than what has currently been completed, and to study that option further. Number three involves a signal design, a traffic signal design, so hence a little more than number one. And, you know, number four represents the existing road, so perhaps this is a set of plans, you know, hypothetically here of a reconstructed road, you know, new pavements, new striping, et cetera, obviously the least. And number five, taking a step backwards from where we are at the, you know, current progress here at this modified road section, to, you know, start back to where things were in 2010. So comparing, you know, the number two of shifting things to the north, or number five of going back to the 2010 road, those would take the longest because they have to, you know, take a step back, if you will, and look at the design in a little different way, whereas, you know, number one, we're picking things off where FORA left, and moving it along would be a little faster. The construction hard cost of keeping the project, number one, where it is, is, you know, our baseline here, if you will, and so shifting it north, it does get a little bit longer. So this is my estimate at the moment of just comparing a, you know, unit price of length of roadway, and so obviously there would be some higher cost to that. A traffic signal in number three would be more. And, you know, number two, smaller budget to reconstruct the roadway in its current configuration. Number five, similar cost to the current design of modified road section. Some soft cost budgets are allocated here since for staking the project, managing construction, it's inspected. and inspections of the project, that, you know, what happens throughout. And then the MECC or CSP, so munitions of explosives of concern, construction support plan. So this is a placeholder budget at the moment for an on-call support if there are munitions found and, and, you know, high-end here assuming that multiple munitions found and there are specialists that would come out to deal with those. So as we look down, you know, to the bottom line here for costs and timeline, you know, taking into account the environmental costs up above, along with these construction considerations. You know, number, number one of the modified road section, 2010 alignment with the roundabout, that's our baseline here, 11.3 million. Alternative two here of considering a shift to the north of, you know, say, the order of 400 feet or so, although it would have some longer time upfront for some of the design and more costs on the design, it actually ends up being cheaper than sticking with the current alignment because of the environmental considerations. And it ends up being faster because of the same environmental considerations when it's all added together. You know, we found that the signalized intersection we'd expect would take longer and cost more, you know, because of those construction items. And, you know, moving our way down the line here, you know, towards the end of the number five, going backwards, those, those taking, taking more and costing, costing more and taking longer. I seem to have a...
Andy, we lost you.
I think he dropped off, actually. I don't see him on here anymore.
Okay. I'll take it.
He's there, he's just muted.
Andy, you're muted.
He was frozen. There he is.
Yeah, I think I'm having a little technical difficulty here. My screen started flashing, but I am back. I think I was just wrapping up there and, you know, ready to, you know, pass this back to you, Dino.
Okay, thanks a lot, Andy. Great, great, great work. So the staff recommendation at this point, again, not where we started with in terms of initial thoughts on the project, but certainly where initial due diligence has led us, is to, first of all, look at this project as a multimodal transportation safety project for the city of Delray Oaks that would put a roundabout at the intersection of General Jim Moore and South Boundary Road, extend a shared-use path down the northern alignment of South Boundary Road, allow a reversible lane for a special event traffic, and, and improve drainage rather than the broad original paved amount of roadway that would extend utilities, water, sewer, power, fiber, and gas down South Boundary Road. And we found in our, as part of our due diligence, that our private property owner, whose cooperation with regard to right-of-way is absolutely essential for any northern alignment to work, we found that our private property owner was willing to work with the city on a exchange of land where right-of-way is needed or contiguous land elsewhere on the, along his parcel line. And so that frankly made the right-of-way acquisition reasonable, feasible, very possible. And so as a result, our initial due diligence leads us to recommend that we continue to look at shifting the alignment to the north because it's less expensive, it requires less time to construct, and is environmentally preferred. Again, obviously, we're going to, we're going to impact the environment building this road, there's no question, but relatively, the impact on endangered species, particularly seaside birds beak, thanks to the work of Erin Haraway and our biologists, we would not impact seaside birds beak on that northern alignment. So what we ended up with was a potential alignment here that allows for safe automobile traffic and flow through a roundabout intersection as opposed to the current relative chaos of that stop-controlled intersection that's angled with the current alignment, as well as providing the ability for pedestrian traffic and bicycles to flow through that intersection across General Jim Moore safely to South Boundary Road and then along South Boundary Road towards Ryan Ranch safely and separated from vehicular traffic and then connecting with future trail networks when FORTAG is extended up through our four-door properties. Next slide, please. And so what we'd like to do now is, is take public input, take council input, receive any direction from council, and this does not require a vote tonight. We can receive direction from council after talking with the city attorney and proceed. If a vote is desired by the council, you can certainly proceed that way, but it is not required to give us direction to proceed. And again, our recommendation is that we continue to look at this preliminary design and environmental review of the northern alignment to test our initial conclusion that it is, that it is the preferred alternative. So I will manage questions and service those to Erin and Andy as needed.
Do you want me to stop sharing the screen or do you want to...
So we can come back if we need to to maps, but for now, let's, let's see some faces. I think that's better.
Sounds good.
So if you want to raise your hand...
So I'd like to go to the council first.
Please, Mary, go ahead.
Follow the procedures.
Very good.
So I'd like to start with Kristin. Do you have any questions, comments?
Yes, I do. First of all, kind of to settle, yes, I want to explore this route with the roundabouts. I think it's brilliant. Moving it north, and I believe you addressed this question, but moving it north, that should alleviate the flooding that we see every year at the entrance to South Boundary Road, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, okay. The other thing is I really think is brilliant is to have that extra road, that extra lane. And that's something that I'd like to see if anybody's listening on Highway 156, you know, to have, have that extra lane going in and out of the peninsula to alleviate the traffic. I've seen that done in San Diego with commute traffic or, you know, whatever. In our case, it's going to be probably, you know, the traffic for all the special events out there. I have one question about the lifespan of the road, how long this road, the infrastructure. I want to make sure that it's a good, solid road. I don't know how long it, before it's going to need any repairs. And I also am wondering, you know, Monterey uses this road a lot to get to their, you know, over there to all the hospitals and everything else. So is Monterey going to be responsible for any of this road in the future? And I think Andrew, Erin, and Dino did a great job on this. I think that it's smart and it makes sense. That's all I have.
Okay, I can answer the Monterey question, then Andy, if you can take the lifespan question. So the, one of the many things we have to do is negotiate an agreement with the city of Monterey regarding maintenance of the road. And that will, that will be done. It's something that's going to be done later in the priorities of work, but it will establish the terms of road maintenance and codify those for the long term. Andy?
Okay, thank you, Dino. I guess to speak to roadway lifespan longevity, what was currently being considered is this is just an asphalt concrete roadway on aggregate base, so just like any other road that you'll see throughout town. And, you know, lifespans of those certainly require maintenance. I think it's on the order of, you know, every seven years, there needs to be some type of, you know, sealing of the roadway. And, you know, there's routine maintenance to make sure that water doesn't get into the underneath, underneath the pavement into that subgrade and cause failure. So, you know, generally speaking, I think it's more like a couple decades that a roadway might need more thorough work, but on the order of seven years, there's generally some overlay type work anticipated. But I think you'd expect this roadway to be of a sufficient structural standard to withstand the daily traffic, the trucks that could be driving on here. It will be, you know, up to the latest, you know, structural standards necessary to make sure it's lasting just as long as it's supposed to.
Okay, and then just one more quick question. When, when you have the, some roads have like, when you kind of drift over to the right, it's got the bumps, just like they have on Highway 68. Will this road also have that to protect, you know, people on the, riding their bike or walking on the side?
Yeah, the little rumble strip there.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
We hadn't necessarily gotten to that type of detail yet to consider. I think you're correct, because usually those are to protect a bike lane or to keep a car, you know, on pavement and make sure that they don't accidentally veer off if you're dozing off, what have you. So we certainly look into that, but fortunately, the safety feature of having the separated multi-use, shared-use path, you know, that is that physical separation is certainly the safest way to go.
Correct. I'm not worried about people dozing off. I think I'm more worried about people that text and drive and are talking and driving. It's that type of, that worries me.
Okay, I'll take note of that, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
There I am now. There was an excellent presentation, and thank you all who prepared this. It was really good. It was very clear and thorough. Roundabouts, I think, are the way to go, especially along in that area, signal to me would just not be good, would be a waste of people's time and would probably, at certain times of the year, it would create a lot of traffic problems. I do have a question about Laguna Seca using, when they have events, that will be heavily traveled, and I do like the lane switching. I too have seen that in San Diego, and it's outstanding. It's an interesting process to watch them switching the lanes, but it is very outstanding and would be very appropriate for the Laguna Seca events. But my question is, will they be sharing any costs in the maintenance of that road or anything?
I love the way you think, and I look forward to trying to extract whatever we can from Laguna Seca for their event traffic.
Thank you again for the presentation.
All right, Louise?
Again, also, I mean, it's a great presentation, and I'm thrilled that it looks like the northern option is a win-win-win-win-win for everybody. And I look forward to what further development of the concept brings. I like the separation and the catchment swales. I think that's wonderful way of, well, I mean, every drop that goes back into our drinking water aquifer, and that's where that water will eventually end up, rather than in the ocean, is a wonderful, wonderful solution. One question I did have, and it probably, well, it probably goes into the design phase. California as a whole is starting to discourage gas use. So I don't know if there's a need for natural gas lines in the design. There's, there's the Central Coast Community Power, I think they're now called, formerly the Monterey Bay Community Power. They have funds out there where they're helping low-income homes convert to all-electric. And the state of California is greatly encouraging minimizing the use of gas appliances, gas, natural gas period, especially in residence. So I'm not sure that a natural gas line would be needed out there. And that's something that may affect the costs or at the timeline. Or in any case, our oncoming not-so-fast coordination with PG&E or whoever. And it may give us a chance to, as we talked about, potentially having our own electrical grid from the community power, not have to do any business with PG&E up there. Thank you again for a great presentation and great thoughts, and I'm looking forward to what the next steps are.
Louise, just a couple of brief answers to that. We, we've had very preliminary discussions with Central Coast Community Power about islanding that portion of Delray Oaks based on sort of their model. And we'll continue to have those discussions and how they can affect and assist the broader community. We'll also keep the notion in mind about potentially not having gas as we talk with PG&E, which, as you said, goes much more slowly than talking to Central Coast Community Thank you.
So I love this design. I've been kind of watching it come together. I don't know if Andrew, you were, you were involved when FORA, when Peter Said started this, but I remember that in 2018, this was, this was a very difficult kind of problem to solve just because of all the land types, all the different phases. And then, and I remember the aha moment when, when they, when they, the thought of bifurcating or taking off the, letting basically the pedestrian bicycle corridors be, not, not be tied to the road grade, which really changed a lot of the gray, the cut and fill. And then it just made, I actually, it made the road just so much more organic. And I really think that this is an amazing design. I like that, you know, every good solution always seems to bear better fruit in how, one, you know, it started with a grading redesign, and then it started with a safety thing for bikes, and now it's turning out to be environmentally superior. You kind of know that you're on the right track when the universe kind of falls into place like that. So I think that this is a, you know, it's a great design. Aaron, do we have any GHD calc's for, for the improvements that the road would have over the existing condition, over the, over the no road or the not, or the do-nothing scenario that we have right now?
Mary, you okay with answering directly? Yeah, okay. No, if the council does direct us to look at this more closely, that would be something that we would, we would evaluate.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I think that there's, there's a definite, I mean, just because we're, if we're moving traffic more efficiently, then we're going to be reducing GHD emissions. And so, so that's something that I would like to be brought in as one of the benefits, and then also maybe one of the negatives of doing nothing. And then the safety, you know, the safety component, too. I think that that would be a nice, a nice, nice way to weigh this in. I, you know, I've been involved in this and worked diligently with Dino to get the money to have this thing, you know, done, and so I support it 100%. And I think the option two is, is the direction I think you guys should be, should be pursuing or in staying on track. So. That's it.
All right. I had a couple of questions. I would like to see a map of the proposed alignment. Does that exist?
It does not exist yet. Mayor, it's a good question, and it gets to discussions about right-of-way, discussions about the particulars of situating the, the road. What we, what we do know is that, and Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think I heard 400 feet to the north. The intersection we're looking at moves the, the intersection of General Jim Moore and South Boundary Road an additional 400 feet north than where the plans currently have it, the 2010 plans currently have it. Precise setting and drawings don't exist, but we look forward to developing those in the, in the months ahead and returning to the community and the council with, with more precision as we, as we define the project better and continue with environmental review.
Great, thank you. And for me, the big question is cost, right? We have, you know, approximately $8.3 million in the least, well, other than the, the keeping at is, as is, is over 11. Where does, where does the additional money come from?
Right. Great question, Mayor. So, so part of our due diligence here has simply been to get to the numbers that you just talked about, right? In July, we started to really understand how much money we were getting from FORA, roughly $8.8 million. And we then embarked on trying to understand the project costs, because we didn't have good numbers. And we've reached the point we're presenting to you tonight, which, as you, as you correctly said, shows a delta or shortfall of in excess of $2 million to build the road. What we're excited about exploring is grant funding through TMC, with the help of TMC, and they've been very, very supportive to date about the notion of this roundabout and moving the, that intersection to the north. And with, with their sort of technical expertise and sort of real, real gravitas that, that the TMC staff brings, and we have Rich Deal and Todd Muck on the line with us tonight, we look forward to applying for grant funding to, to try to close that, that funding gap. There also exist other potential options of funding, which we will explore, whether it's using some city funding from reserves or, or going out for, for other types of, of grant funding. And we will, we will be exploring every avenue of, of funding as we move forward with this, with this design, so that we can provide the council as many options as possible that allow this project to be accomplished without, without dipping into our general fund.
Louise, yes? You're muted?
Yeah, sorry. My finger wasn't working as fast as I wanted it to unmute me. Part of the road, not much, but it looks like a few hundred yards or so belong to the city of Monterey is, they're contributing to this construction, not just to the maintenance once it's built.
That's certainly, that's certainly an option, and I look forward to discussing that with, with, with Monterey.
Okay. So, John, if you don't mind, I'd like to finish my questions, and then I'll come back to the council for additional.
Sure.
Okay. Can you tell me the, and maybe this is Aaron or Andy, can you tell me the cost difference between a signalized intersection versus a roundabout?
Yeah, I think Andy's probably best suited.
Okay.
Andy, you want to take a swing?
Yeah, I, it's not exactly just a straightforward answer, but, and these costs certainly vary. We're, you know, on our chart here, we, we had in the order, I think it was $500,000, you know, difference here to, it represents, first off, the design of the signal and the, you know, acquisition of all the materials for the signal. Certainly roundabouts have some, you know, qualifications there that, that make this a little hard to equate on a one-for-one basis without a, you know, more thorough review here. But generally speaking, you know, roundabouts are bigger at the intersection, signals require more, more beat-up and, you know, turnpocket length. So we, we had been estimating, you know, in the order of $500,000 to $600,000 extra for the signal, simply because we're, we're seeing, you know, in the, the industry right now, the, the cost for the equipment and the install is very high, was the real big reason for the difference.
Interesting, thank you. Because it appears that a take permit for the Salamander is about 500,000. The in, interesting number. Um, sorry, hang on just a minute. Oh, so looking at all these options, would option four, for the $2.4 million, would that include tearing it up for utilities to be put in?
Andy?
Good to hear you say that. So these costs here, so the, the utilities, so first off sewer and water are, you know, with other utility companies, and they have, there's different CIP projects that would be, you know, providing that, that funding. So these costs here are just for grading roadway-related improvements, not for sewer and water costs. So what would happen here is, you know, for instance, Marina Coast Water District has a capital improvement program for a new water main in this roadway. So, you know, you, things could get timed in Marina Coast Water District, and TIBD's been, you know, aware of this project. And so as the roadway is reconstructed, old pavement removed before the new pavement would come back, they would put in their, their pipelines, you know, as part of that separate project.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, none of the, none of the, the options that we're looking at tonight include utilities? That's all?
I got it, Andy. The, the utility, Mayor, the utility budgets
Yeah.
are outside of the numbers that we're discussing. So we would need to go to the Marina Coast Water District's capital programs budget for the potable and, and recycled water pipelines, and that's in their five-year CIP, as well as going to Seaside County Sand and, and other utilities to, to discuss those projects.
Okay. So there aren't additional costs on top of this for the city for any, any of these options?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go quite that far. We, we don't, I mean, what we've not completely done is scoped the cost of, of the various utilities, other than water. Water and recycled water, Marina Coast has done a good job, and they've got it in their CIP program and budgeted. Everything else is a work in progress.
Okay, gotcha. And, Dino, can you tell us how much has already been spent, and does that come out of our $500,000 contract line?
Yeah, I checked today, and, uh, thank you, Andy and Aaron. We've received no bills yet from, from either Witsen Engineers or DDA for any of this work. I'm sure it's forthcoming, and, and it will be paid for out of the consultant contract costs, and, and then ultimately the, the escrow accounts.
Okay, great. And last one I have before we go out to public, or, or back to the council. I really liked Louise's electrification conversation, and I would love to see the city, you know, put in a, a building code that says everything new is electrified. So tying to that, and the materials for the road, can permeable materials be used?
Andy?
An option, and we can price that out. Generally speaking, they will be much more expensive and have a less of a lifespan, require more maintenance. So by us providing the separated vegetated swell along the side of the road, it's really providing the same benefit that the water's getting into the ground in a more natural way, instead of trying to provide a material to do it because we didn't have the room. So we have the original road design without any space, the permeable asphalt or real concrete, you know, whatever it may be, would be something I'd say is a little more viable. But, but we're, our calc's right now are, are such that we're trying to get the water into the ground with our roadside accommodations.
And then the last thing, I'm, sorry, I keep saying that, don't I? It appears that the new, potential new routing is on a grade, whereas the other option was not. Does that factor differently as far as construction, or is that simply a, just an engineering function?
Dino, if I may?
Yep.
We, we took a preliminary look at this, and you're, you're right, Mayor, that there is some grade as, as General Jim Moore Boulevard climbs up that hill, and so South Boundary would be chasing that. But by shifting it further to the north, there'd be a longer distance to make up that difference. And as Dino pointed out early on, the roadway up at General Jim's already widened out, you know, almost in anticipation of a connection right here. So the original 2010 shifting of the roadway would have actually required a, a bigger scar, if you will, or, you know, grading right there to put, you know, force that intersection in. Further to the north, it's, it's longer to get there, so we can run out the slope better.
Wonderful, thank you. John?
Well, I just think, just in terms of funding, I mean, the, there's, there is always, I'm, I'm realizing this in, in working with Monterey One, there's always money, state money, grant money for jurisdictions to put in infrastructure. It's one of the, the easiest things that, that the states and, and granting institutions like to put money into, because it's, the returns on it are so much greater, the, the benefits, not, not so much the, the economic, or the, the direct economic return, but just the, the returns in efficiency and, and then the, the economic growth that, that it can support beyond that. So, you know, $2 million is not, we just asked the state for, for $11 million, and they didn't even blink for, for two more wells. So I would not be too concerned about where we're going to have money, especially when we're covering nearly 80% of it out of, out of, out of the FORA fund. So finding the money, I don't think is going to be the hard part.
Kristen?
Yeah, in regards to moving it north, I also just realized that you're probably going to have a, a safety, there's going to be a safety issue where you can actually see cars coming from the right. Right now, it's very blind. So I think that's probably going to be a safer route and keep our police and fire from responding to, to people getting injured up there. So that's another good reason for moving it north.
Any other council comments before we go out to public comment? I'm not, Fred, I'll get right there. Um, no council comments? Actually, Nikki Naroff messaged me and said she doesn't have the function to raise her hand, so I'd like to start with her.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Hopefully you can hear me. Dear Mayor Kerr and members of the City Council, first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to this agenda item. And on behalf of the Monterey Bay Chapter of the California Native Plant Society, thank you for your consideration of abandoning the 2010 road alignment and the design plans for the intersection at South Boundary Road and General Jim Moore Boulevard. And thank you for directing city consultants to consider a design that moves the road to a more northerly alignment. So what I'd like to do is actually read a letter that CNPS submitted to the city yesterday from Chapter President Brian Laney, and I'm going to bring that up, just in case the City Council members haven't had a chance to read it, but also so members of the public know what this CNPS has said regarding option two and the consideration of a more northerly alignment. So President Brian Laney wrote, "Dear Mayor Kerr and members of the City Council, the Monterey Bay Chapter of the California Native Plant Society thanks the city for exploring the feasibility of a more northerly road alignment that would relocate the new roundabout and intersection of South Boundary Road and General Jim Moore Boulevard to avoid impacts to the 4.63 acre Habitat Reserve, which CNPS refers to as Plant Reserve 1 North. The Army referred to the 4.63 acre Habitat Reserve as Parcel E29A1. So during a public comment period prior to the June 23, 2020 City Council closed session, CNPS advocated moving any future road development northward to achieve the following goals: Avoid the 4.63 acre Habitat Reserve. Avoid removing old growth, high-quality maritime chaparral and the special status species the Habitat Reserve supports. Avoid the need for incidental take permit for the endangered seaside birdsbeak. Reduce the amount of soil grading and placement of unused fill, which could reduce impacts and could reduce costs. Populations of several status species, including the California endangered seaside birdsbeak, could be conserved by moving all road developments significantly far north of Plant Reserve 1 North, along with other steps to maintain the integrity and values of the 4.63 acre Habitat Reserve. CNPS urges you to take affirmative steps to assure protection and perpetuity of the 4.63 acre Habitat Reserve. We've not seen any maps or drawings of the proposed new northerly alignment, and we look forward to reviewing those and working with the city to ensure that no impacts occur to the 4.63 acre Habitat Reserve. Sincerely, Brian Laney, President." And we consider your consideration of a more northerly design a seismic shift, a seismic shift. It's enormous, and we look forward to working with you on that. So thank you.
You're muted. Thanks, Nikki. Fred Watson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I think a lot of what I, I might say is going to echo what has been said. My name is Fred Watson, I'm speaking as a professor of environmental science at CSOMB and as one of the volunteer co-founders of the Fort Ord Regional Trail in Greenway, or FORTAG. As many of you know, Scott Watts and I have spent a large part of the last few years working with many stakeholders on a combined approach to transportation planning and conservation planning in Delray Oaks. I support, we support option two with a roundabout, contingent on some of these details that will hopefully be clarified soon. I have four reasons for this support. One, it appears to completely avoid all past and present locations, all known past and present locations of seaside birdsbeak, which is a state endangered plant. I'm personally familiar with these locations, having mapped some of them in the field and collated all the previous maps of the species into, in this area into one map. Avoiding the plant is crucial, not just because it's rare and sensitive and currently stressed by limited opportunities to physically protect it from traffic right now, but also because there's a 20-year history of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife not allowing take permits for this very population. It appears, reason number two, it appears to completely avoid the 4.63 acre native plant reserve that was negotiated by CNPS. Reason three, with a roundabout, this option reduces the risk of backed-up traffic impairing the tranquility of the Frog Pond Wetland Preserve. Reason four, it greatly enhances our regional network of safe, accessible, and pleasant trailers for bikes, pedestrians, and wheelchairs by including a 12-foot multipurpose path along South Boundary Road that is physically separated from the roadway. Whilst not strictly part of FORTAG, this segment, along with FORTAG, is a crucial link in the goal to make Delray Oaks a completely connected, walkable, bikeable, accessible, sustainable city. Regarding FORTAG specifically, we look forward to continuing to work with the engineers, city, CNPS, and TMC on the details of how FORTAG will cross South Boundary Road. And in summary, as long as it is far enough north to completely avoid the 4.363 acre plant reserve and the birdsbeak, I think option two with a roundabout is a key step toward making this area a properly functioning landscape for the city. I recommend that the council provide direction to pursue it and that maps be provided, that clarify- that clarify the details with respect to the birdsbeak and the plant reserve in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Doug McKenzie?
Yes, thank you. I'm also glad to know that the city is considering moving the road in a northerly direction. I did notice in Mr. Hunter's presentation that he didn't take into account the litigation costs of continuing with the 2010 alignment, excuse me, which I noted earlier for June, at least in part, part of the 34 grand. And in July, specifically noted in the budget document was $6,209. So that wasn't included in that presentation. I also note, I walked up there the other day, that just north of the reserve, where the city's gate is, there's an existing road that low and behold seems to go along the trajectory of the proposed northerly road. That seems to me, I don't know why that wasn't mentioned, that seems to me a no-brainer, as they say, to locate the road there. The question I have is, is there an intention to run a sewer line out to the RV park? Or are they going to have a cesspool out there? I'm not clear about that. Finally, I noted in the agenda packet that this whole process started July 1st, which is a bit confusing to me, because the city manager came to the Sustainable DRO meeting on July 9th and attempted to castigate those of us that had supported CNPS's position during the June meeting. Didn't mention anything about this design process, denigrated CNPS's attorney, so I don't buy it. I don't know, you knew about it July 1st. Anyhow, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Scott Waltz?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm literally taking off my FORTAG hat since Fred had the opportunity to speak to those issues. I'll keep my comments short. I want to speak to the effectiveness of roundabouts. Unlike my everyday work, I actually put my academic skills to practical use by combing through some of the research literature on roundabouts. And here are the conclusions of that effort. They reduce crash frequency and severity. They improve safety for pedestrians due to reduced car speeds, fewer conflict points, and shorter crossing distances. They reduce traffic emissions, thereby reducing impacts to the environment. They decrease traffic delays on roads, which increases average road travel time. And they allow for increased traffic volume, which means that building a roundabout is a better road feature in terms of a long-term investment for the city. Clearly, what we don't want is a signalized or signed intersection that impedes the flow of traffic. It's been mentioned earlier by, I think, a couple of people. We don't want that leading to a line of cars during after-work hours or Laguna Seca events extending down to the Frog Pond and interrupting the experience of folks who are strolling there to unwind after work or on the weekends. Lastly, I'll mention that I was really encouraged to hear that city staff has been working with staff members and outside experts, taking time and carefully considering the options, and then presenting them to the public, and providing a data set for beginning a public process of garnering response from the community in consideration of the alternatives, and asking the City Council to launch that process so that we eventually end up with the very best option for the Delray Oaks community. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Patrice, who also messaged me that she doesn't have a hand function?
I have two hands, but no hand function. I would just like to ask the question really directly. Does this proposed Number Two plan keep the reserve habitat protected and intact, the 4.63 acres? Could somebody, Andy or Aaron or Dino, answer this very clear, direct question? Thank you.
Yeah, Patrice, I'm happy to answer that. It appears, based on the work we've done so far, which I just want to stress is preliminary, so I really need everybody to understand that there's, we just don't have a final alignment yet. But what it looks like to us at this point is that the road intersection moved north by 400 feet and then extended out avoids the entirety of the city-owned 4.63 acre parcel. And we absolutely look forward to being able to share detailed maps with the community once we have them, and to be able to simply show you that it does rather than describe it in words. We're just not quite there yet, but we're thrilled at where we are, because it appears that we're going to avoid the entirety of the 4.63 acre city parcel.
And when will you have an answer? When do you expect to know that?
That's a great question. Months, months from now.
Thank you.
All right. Mary Sulzing?
Hi, my name is Mary Sulzing, I live at Hillwell Place. I want to thank Dino and Andy and Aaron for the presentation, it was very good. Also want to thank Dino for his recognition that there's lots of unknowns and that he's looking for public input. Just as background, I began my career with Ventura County Public Works Department, and one of the things that I learned there was that if you were going to build a new road or you were going to expand or improve an existing road, one of the things that you really needed to do, first of all, was to figure out how much traffic that you thought that you were going to have to handle on that road. It was like the basic thing was to get a projection of a traffic count. I haven't heard anything about that tonight, and it's very troubling to me, because I've been asking for a long time when we're going to have public input to the development of the Fort Ord property. I don't know, as I sit here, maybe others do, but I don't know, as I sit here, whether what you're looking at is high-density residential with maybe 3,000 new houses, or maybe low-density with maybe one house per acre, or maybe it's a mixed-use commercial and residential. But whatever those projections are, I think that we deserve to know what they are, and we deserve to know what the thought process is out there. I think that all of this about the road alignment and the cross-sections and how wide the lanes are going to be, and whether there's going to be two or three or four, I think all of that has to be based upon what you expect that road to carry. And like I said, I haven't heard a word about that as yet. So the other thing that I'm wondering, there's been a lot of talk tonight about the money and the difference between the 8.8 and the 11 million. And so that gives me cause, we sold the property to the RV park, part of the Fort Ord property to the RV park, and I think that price was around $1.5 million. And I don't know whether that's been paid, and if it's been paid, where is that money? Or has it been spent? And if it, what's it been spent on? So those are my questions. I will say that I'm really glad to see that the alignment is going to be moved in order to avoid the conservation preserve out there, and that's it.
Thank you, Mary.
Mary, I missed that last question that you asked. Do you mind?
Yeah, it had to do with the sale of the RV park land, land to the RV park, I guess that would be the better way to put it. So I thought that price was around 1.5 million, if you could confirm that one way or the other. And then have they paid it? Did we receive the money? And if we did, where is it? Or has it been spent? And if it was spent, what did we spend it on?
Got it. Let me take that one, if I may, and then Andy, if you can take a swing at traffic counts to the extent that we can address that tonight, I'm not sure we can, but if you don't mind, or Aaron. Mary, that the land where the RV resort is projected to be built, as well as the land adjacent to General Jim Moore, were purchased by the same father-son partnership some five and a half, six years ago, for what I believe was a total price of $3 million, half of which went to FORA based on the then structured agreement on proceeds from property sales on the former Fort Ord. And the 1.5 million or so that came to the city at that time for the sale of that land went to keep the city solvent. The city was in pretty deep straits, dire straits at that time, and I can't tell you at this moment exactly what it was spent on, but it essentially kept the city afloat at a time when it was not doing too well financially.
Thank you, Dino. And Andy, when you're answering that question about traffic counts, what I'm really getting down to here is, how are you projecting that? What are you thinking is going to be built out there at Fort Ord? How many cars are we going to be? What kind of traffic are we going to be dealing with from the development out there?
Okay, before you start, Andy, let me address the development question, because that, Mary, I know that's near and dear to your heart, and I need to sort of put that in context a little bit. Whatever's been done in terms of traffic counts, and Andy can address that here in a minute, and perhaps even Rich and Todd could talk about regional traffic counts and how they go in, because we really are talking here about a road that connects us to Laguna Seca, to Ryan Ranch, out to 68. There's a lot of bypass traffic that comes through there that is separate and distinct from anything we might or might not do on our Fort Ord property, number one. Number two, we don't currently have a approved development for the former Fort Ord property that's going to be developed. There are historical development forecasts that FORA asked of all jurisdictions to put in so that they could do their models for a variety of things. And if I recall, those models for our parcel, and we could get this from City Hall and give you some more accurate stuff, but it's close, it called for residential development out there to the tune of hundreds of units, somewhere in the 300 to 400 range, I believe, of various types of product, from multi-use structures attached to single-family residential detached, and then certain square footages of light industrial space and commercial space. That was what FORA was tracking. Now, that is not preordained to be so in any way, as our council looks to development forward, but that's what I know about in terms of background as it relates to that property. Andy, do you want to take a, do you have something to add regarding traffic volume and traffic counts?
Well, Dino, maybe just to add on to what you're saying, that in 2010, there was an environmental review, this EAIS, and so traffic studies were done at that time that took the land uses of the base reuse plan, and just as you're saying, Dino, about assumptions that go into that, there were, you know, certain intensities applied based on these land uses for adjacent parcels. This was reaffirmed in, right in the months preceding the dissolution of FORA with the new transition traffic study that was prepared to confirm, you know, assumed traffic volumes and the CIP projects that were to be transferred around. So, I'm sorry, I don't have numbers in front of me to say exactly what the vehicles per day were assumed on South Boundary Road, but I can say that there were, you know, traffic studies performed for the former military base, and based on the base reuse plan, they, you know, confirmed that essentially a two-lane roadway. So, you know, it confirmed that the South Boundary Road did not need to be more than two lanes, one in each direction. And through the environmental review back in 2010, in collaborations with, you know, the county in regards to Laguna Seca, that's where, you know, the review happened about adding this third lane for the special event traffic, you know, coming in and out of Laguna Seca. So, anything else? Yeah.
Thank you.
Did that answer, Mary?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Rich Deal?
Hi, my name is Rich Deal, I'm the principal engineer with the transportation agency for Monterey County, and I just wanted to first applaud the design team for doing a very thorough job in really pointing out several things that are important to remember in this shift to the north of South Boundary Road. First is that roundabouts are safer than signals. The second is that roundabouts have a lower maintenance cost, because you don't have to have energy costs and signal technicians maintaining a traffic signal with a roundabout, which is a huge thing, especially since Delray Oaks doesn't have any traffic signals at all. So that's a significant cost that you don't bear now. The third thing is avoiding environmentally sensitive habitat is a very noble and worthy goal. And when you have a project that gives you an alternative that allows you to do that and have a better performing project for all traffic operations, that's a win-win. And then lastly, just want to point out that the transportation agency is here and available to the city of Delray Oaks for supporting all the funding. We do a great job capturing cash for projects, we're good at it, and we're here to back up Delray Oaks and really put our staff at your disposal to capture that money for this project.
Thank you, Rich. Kim Shirley?
Hi, everyone, Kim Shirley, Baxter Place. I really want to thank Dino and Aaron and Andy for the work and your presentation. I really like the roundabout plan. Obviously, Fred and Scott and Rich did a great deal of, Rich Deal, they all did a good job of explaining the benefits of a roundabout, and I think we should think about that in terms of safety and emissions and focus on that. So Option Two is my choice, and I think the fact that you found a northern route that avoids the reserve is huge. I'm very, very happy about that, and the fact that it's cheaper is, you know, is a bonus, for sure. I have a question for Dino, in just what you're proposing tonight, I'm wondering how far would you go in the scoping before you bring it back to the public for feedback? And then I have one more question to follow up after that, I'll let you answer that.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Kim. That's a great question. We feel that we want to go to about 30% design on that northern alignment from an engineering perspective, and do most, if not all, of the work on an environmental document, so an updated environmental document, which would likely be a supplemental initial study from using the basis of the existing studies, but then doing a supplemental that broadens out and looks at the impacts of the proposed project based on the 30% design plans and updates everything to a contemporary sort of baseline. Now, whether we will wait, I suspect we will not wait until we have all of that done to come back to the public. I just don't know enough at the moment to tell you precisely when and under what circumstances we'll be coming back to the public, but what I look forward to, just in general terms, is a good, robust, public dialogue on this really important transportation safety project that gets as much buying that gets as much buy-in from our community and other stakeholders, you know, CMPS included, as is possible. Because ultimately, we want a project that is welcomed and that is appreciated and, you know, becomes an enduring part of our city.
Great. Yeah, I appreciate that. Because I do, I want public buy-in. I want all of us to have that input. So I guess what my question in terms, if you're going to be 30% complete in the design, is that completely, I mean, because we're not going to know what we're developing out there until we go to the public, hopefully. So I'm just wondering, would you have a place to turn around if we changed plans for what we're going to build out there? I guess I'm just wondering, how far would you get in the planning stage before we'd be able to turn around if we changed our minds in terms of what we're going to be building out there? I just want to, I want us to remain flexible, but yet I still want you to be able to look further into this, in this option, because there are so many benefits to it. But, so I guess I'm trying to balance all the needs that we have.
Yeah, definitely. And, you know, look, we're definitely, and that's why we're here tonight, and it's why we're looking for council direction, because we're looking at expending, you know, non-trivial amounts of money starting soon to continue this due diligence and continue this work. We feel that it's the direction to go based on our preliminary work. But the money we would be spending, I don't want to say all of it would be absolutely lost if we changed direction, but certainly most of it would be, because we're focusing on a particular location and alignment and doing the work on that area based on this initial promise that it shows. So it'll be, you know, ultimately, sort of process-wise, when we come back to council to look at the revised project description and the environmental document, that's a point, maybe six months from now, hard to say exactly when that would be. That's a point where if things bear out and there's not a fatal flaw identified, that we would be looking to really cement and move forward. Short of that, you know, obviously, look, we're changing direction. It's 60% designed and adopted environmental right now. So you can always change direction. You know, the question is, what are the trade-offs? And this is, you know, I mean, look, I told Nikki in no uncertain terms when I started this exercise in July that it made no sense in the world to go north. And it didn't to me at the time. But the data has taken us in a different direction. The studies have taken us in a different direction. And I'm absolutely happy to acknowledge the Seaside Birdspeak warning that Nikki gave me bore out 100%. And so that's why we're headed this way. Change can always happen. There's a cost to change. And we'll try to highlight that at every time, at every point we come to the community. And again, we're still at the pretty early stages of this, but, you know, a particular timeline, a construction timeline or project timeline is still very fuzzy for us right now. But it'll come into focus, and we'll be able to share it. And it'll help us better answer questions like you're asking tonight.
Okay. Well, thanks again, Dino, for being flexible in thinking and looking at the data. That's really important. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. I'd like to go to Frederica Jones. She also, I don't know what it is with people not having the hand function, but Frederica.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor and Mr. City Manager and staff. I think it's really wonderful that we're discussing this major project. This is probably one of the biggest ones that we've probably had in the last 30 years. And it's an exciting time for everyone, but I have a couple of questions. Dino, I just heard you say that there was no development plans for that road as of yet. And so my question is, couldn't that be something, that be the cost and the development of that road be a joint venture with the development that will be going into that area? And, I mean, I've heard a lot of developments that are being developed, and they're paying for the roads, the utilities, everything that's going in. So couldn't we hold off on making an $11 million decision to, and wait to see what kind of development is actually going to go in there? So that's question number one. You want to answer that now? Okay, thank you, Dino.
Yeah, thanks, Frederica. So the answer is absolutely yes. We would look at various mechanisms. If the council entertains a, you know, an exclusive negotiating agreement and working towards a development disposition agreement with a developer on how that development would help pay for city infrastructure. It is not necessary to wait on the road, given that we have these project funds, and they are only earmarked for the project. And we can't spend that $8 million on anything except South Boundary Road project. So it's either going to get spent on that project or returning it to the surrounding jurisdictions. But, to your point, maintenance, stub outs and driveways, bus stops, fire hydrants, I mean, a ton of detail that costs money along that roadway can and certainly would be considered for some kind of development impact fee or other structure of fee with a developer going forward.
Thank you. So can you clarify something I just heard you say? So we got the 8.5 million. And are you saying that if we don't use all of that and we chose to go alternative route of four, which is only the 2.5 million, that $6 million is going back to various jurisdictions?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So one other last question that I have is I heard you speak about some Marina Water projects that scheduled to go in there. But one of the things that I've heard you repeatedly say, Dino, in the past is that road work and pavement never go in alignment with projects that are due. That many times, the roads are going to get paved or redone, and whatever project needs to come in is not hand in hand because of everybody else's timeline. Is there some plan to hold off, even if we went with just the minimum? Can we hold off on doing anything until Marina One or Marina Water puts their service equipment in there and then move forward on whether it's the $2 million or the $11 million? Does it have to be a hasty decision tonight to how we move forward and how rapidly those projects will start?
Yeah, thanks, Frederica. So the Marina Coast Water District Capital Improvement Program contains a project, funded project, for a potable water pipeline and a recycled water pipeline that extends their service from where it currently ends on General Jim Moore, up from the South Boundary Road intersection that exists today, on down to South Boundary and up South Boundary Road to Rancho Sosito. The design work that Andy and his firm are doing, design the utility trenches under the roadway for those utilities to go in. So we're designing those as we go. And the plan absolutely is to have, is to work closely with Marina Coast Water District so that their design of the actual pipelines coincide with our design work on the project and their construction work of the pipelines coincides and is synchronized with the construction of the roadway. What I've said in the past, which is absolutely true, is it never fails, no matter how hard you try to de-conflict utilities with roadwork, we never get it 100% right. It's just the way of things. It's infuriating. The more OCD you are, the more infuriating it is. But it's not something we are ignoring. It's not something that hasn't been thought of for years, because it actually absolutely has been being coordinated for years. And it's something we'll continue to work closely to do.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to move on to Dennis Allion.
Thank you. Actually, I raised my hand after Ken, but if you want to jump ahead, that's fine. The first thing I want to do is thank Dino. I don't know if very many people appreciate that Dino is a one-man operation virtually. I mean, he's got great support from people, but you look at any other city, Sand City, Seaside, I don't care, Monterey, Pacific Grove, there'd be an entire staff of people that would be working on this project. So I think a real shout-out goes to Dino for his political acumen, if I pronounce that correctly, his ability to work with people and get various agencies to cooperate and work together. This is extraordinary. People don't understand it, I don't think, and they don't appreciate it. So thank you again, Dino, for your extraordinary commitment to our city. Thank you. And also, I want to thank Nikki. Nikki, thank you for the Native Plant Society stepping up. And I want to highlight something here. Remember that we only took over this project, what, at the end of June, when FORA went away? And the Native Plant Society says, hey, wait a minute. You know, it's been two or four or five or 10 years that we've been working with FORA, and we never made any motion movement on this particular issue. We need to get it resolved. Well, when the city of Delray Oaks took it over and Dino Pick took charge of it, it worked out wonderfully. It's working out wonderfully. We're not there yet. It's working out wonderfully. And because we were willing to take a look and listen to what the Native Plant Society was talking about. So again, Dino, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Can I inter? Nikki, Nikki, there's folks in line, but I will come to you.
Okay, awesome.
Ken Rutherford.
Thank you. And thanks also for, Dino, for considering the more northerly route through. I know that you listened to us complaining about the CMPS acreage possibly being disturbed. And it appears that you did hear us and took other considerations going forward and having those looked at. And I really appreciate that. I'm just curious how long we have before the $8 million has to be returned if we don't use it, is one question that I have. The other is, I was reading the lawsuit with the developers, the 1.5 million dollars that we now owe. And it appears that the developments or redevelopment of South Boundary Road might trigger the repayment of that 1.5 million dollars. And we would have five years to repay that money. Could you just confirm that? Because I know that's money that cannot be granted away. In other words, we can't find a grant to pay 1.5 million dollars over the next five years from the city. So could you confirm that? Because if that's true, that really does increase the cost of this project by 1.5 million dollars, in essence.
Yeah, thank you, Ken.
Also, I have a few more, but do you want to start?
Yeah, let me just take them in turns, just so I don't forget what you asked, because they're great questions, if I may. So can the, if I recall, and Alex and others can keep me straight here, I believe we have 10 years to expend the project funds that we received in escrow, and our escrow agreement contains these dates, before they must be returned based on a distribution model to surrounding jurisdictions. The, it's our understanding, and we can certainly confirm this, and Alex and I can look into it, that road work, you know, public works projects do not trigger the clause in the settlement agreement, which refers, I believe fairly specifically, to private development of the Fort Ord properties. And we will certainly confirm that, because it's a great question, Ken. And lastly, since the federal LLC debt has come up several times tonight, we look forward to addressing in November, when our audit is complete and we have an audited ending fund balance for the last previous fiscal year, and then again at mid-year budget, options for the council to consider regarding any ending fund balance and any disposition they might wish to take using funds from economic uncertainty, which certainly could be used to pay off the federal LLC debt. And it is listed in our strategic plan as an objective for us to complete. And it is frankly the single biggest remaining issue from a financial perspective that I really want to get closure on and bring good options to the city council about.
Thank you. I guess another question I have is, with the $8 million that we have, is it possible to go to the developers and the designers and say, look, here's our budget, $8 million? I know that Councilmember Gagliotti said that we shouldn't have any problems getting grants, but we had to pay over $1 million to keep us solvent without getting grants because of the settlement of that lawsuit. I don't know how our city got into such a bad financial shape just so recently that we had to pay that money. But can you not say to the developers, look, here's our budget, $8 million? What can we get for that? Rather than sort of working the other way around? Because even at $8 million, when they give you a road for $8 million, we know the costs are going to go over that. So maybe those grants could go for those overages. But we would know then what we could get for our money. So it's not a $2 million versus $11 million choice, which doesn't seem, nobody wants to leave $6 million on the table. We want what we can get for our city to improve what we can. The other issue I have is, because I know that everyone's addressing the safety issue of South Boundary Road, and right now, I'm looking at who uses that road, and it's Laguna Seca and Ryan Ranch. The residents of Delray Oaks seldom use that road, I would wager to say. So for safety reasons, maybe what we can do is close that road off for now. Just keep it closed. We've got 10 years to use this $8 million. Consider the development projects for Fort Ord, see what type of road we actually need, and not jump the gun on the development of South Boundary at this point. Let's just wait, take a step back. We've got 10 years. Let's not be in a rush. I understand that Mr. Allion is excited that you've done such a great job. And I do agree that you've listened to us, you've heard our concerns, and you're trying to address them. But I would just say, let's be cautious. We just heard that we had to spend $1 million just to say solvent. So we should not be rushing into a project that could cost us $11 million. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ken. Was there a question, Dino, for you?
I didn't hear one.
I didn't hear one either. Ken, was there a question?
No, I think just comments more than questions.
Okay, okay, thank you. Gary Krieger.
Yeah, Gary Krieger, again, I guess echo a lot of what's been said, right? So happy it's not going through the endangered plants. I love roundabouts, too. One thing I was just going to comment on, because this is going too long. But, you know, maybe next time we come back, I know you didn't have the bills tonight. It might be nice, as we're going through this, there's been, you know, historically, a certain opaqueness sometimes and how money is spent, where it's going in the past. And I know you're doing a great job trying to make this much more transparent. And that's appreciated. And maybe, I would just suggest, one thing it might help with that is as we come, as you're, since it's sort of open-ended, if you give a status on what's been spent and what's left, that might be something that might make people feel a little better. It's something to keep in mind as you can, as you're going through here. And maybe make them send the bills a week before the city council meeting or something. So, but anyway, that was it. But thanks for the good work. And I'm looking forward to see how this plays out. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Nikki.
Just real quick, I wanted to again reiterate that CNPS considers this consideration of the northerly alignment a seismic shift. And we are incredibly thankful that it's even being considered and that steps are being taken to evaluate that what seemed to us a very obvious opportunity. So just thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. I don't see any other hands. Am I missing anyone? Kim, Karen, do you see anybody? Okay, I'm gonna, no, okay, thank you. Counsel. So Kristen, any last, any comments?
Sorry, I wasn't expecting that. No, the only thing is, I kind of disagree with Ken Rutherford about waiting 10 years. I think that the costs for the road might triple. That's about it.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, in my mind, now, this may be incorrect, but I would think that if we have that road there, that that would encourage developers to come in. And that's my only comment, other than I like the location of going north, and I like the roundabouts for safety reasons as well as convenience for drivers, et cetera. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. John? You're muted.
No, I mean, I think, short of, I mean, actually, I want to do this. I mean, I'll make a motion that we, as a council, accept or direct staff to further pursue, I guess, option two.
I'd like an opportunity to comment as well.
Sure, you can go ahead and comment.
Now?
Well, there's a, there was a motion on the table, so does someone want to second it? And if not, then we can continue on.
I'll second it.
All right, I have comments. I'd like to know where the SEQA and NEPA documents are. And if possible, I'd like those on the MP, or, excuse me, work, the DRO website, so everyone can take a look at it. And if I understand Andrew correctly, that also includes the models and the traffic counts for the 2010. Okay, yeah, those would be nice to have. The other thing is, a couple of things. When was the property sold? What year was the property sold to the craniacs?
Karen and Kim, you guys can keep me straight here. I want to say it was 2014?
I want to say 13 or 14, yeah. So I think you're pretty close.
I was thinking.
Okay.
I was thinking 14.
Yeah.
And then my last question is, there was a comment that moving forward involves a non-trivial amount of money. And I'd like to understand what that non-trivial amount is.
Right. Thanks, Mayor. The amount we're looking at in rough figures at the moment to get us to 30% design of the roadway in the north is roughly $40,000. The environmental review, updating all of our environmental documents. Aaron, help me out here. What was our cost there?
It was $55,000.
$55,000. So we're approaching $95,000 of staff work probably over the next six months to take this analysis of that northern alignment to where it needs to be.
And what part of that six months, will there be additional public outreach and input? Opportunities for input?
Right. We don't have those scheduled yet. We simply just have not been able to project out what that engagement's going to look like. But there will certainly be public engagement. We just, I just can't tell you tonight when that will happen. You know, as I sit here and just kind of think through this in mid-September, you know, I can imagine a November, December session with the public. And then coming back into the new year with environmental studies that are completed and plans that are at 30%, sometime perhaps in the February timeframe. And those are best guesses tonight.
Okay.
Aaron, I'm sorry, Mayor Aaron has a question.
Yeah, thanks. I, for some reason, can't find my hand either. And I do these meetings all day long. So I'm not sure what's going on. So thanks. As Dino said, I just wanted to add, you know, we don't have everything planned out. But as I hear the public comment and comments from the council, I think it would be great to get a conceptual drawing and come back to council, as Dino said, before the end of the year. And, you know, not making any decisions, but just sharing and being open about the direction we're going. And then, you know, as part of the SEQA analysis, once we get to 30% and we can do our additional studies and prepare the supplemental, assuming it's a supplemental initial study, mitigated negative declaration, there's also a 30-day public review period where the document gets circulated and people will be able to have the opportunity, public and council, to dig in a little bit more on those details. So that's preliminarily where I'm thinking, Dino. And, you know, we can be open to massaging that public participation plan.
Thank you. And Alex, can you, what financial authority does Dino have to move forward with or without a vote this evening?
Well, the contract with Witsen was taken over by the city pursuant to an MOA previously. And I think as long as it's the pleasure of the council to continue down that path, I think his authority is in lockstep with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other further comments, questions from the council? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and do a roll call. John, the motion is to approve moving. Can you please restate that?
Direct staff to continue to pursue option two.
Karen?
I'll vote. Councilmember Getzold?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Yes.
Councilmember Lintell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes. Passes unanimously. All right, so we're going to move on to new item number B, Consider City Comment Letter to the Airport Regarding Master Airport Plan EIR Amendment. Dino, would you like to do this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, as you and the council and the public know, the city's been engaged in an ongoing dialogue of sorts with the airport district regarding their master plan. This is the third comment letter that the city will be submitting to the airport district, following one on the airport master plan EIR in 2018, November of 2018, and one more recently on the FAA Federal Environmental Review of nearer-term projects. I believe that was in May of 2020. This would be the third letter. The airport, to summarize, issued an addendum to the EIR for their master plan. They did so in August, and they did so while complying with the law in terms of noticing it was the minimum required by law. And city staff were not consulted ahead of time, which is part of the reason we are responding, when we are, to the addendum after the airport board voted to accept it. That addendum essentially takes the north side access road through Delray Oaks that was called for in the airport master plan EIR and moves it from short-term projects to long-term projects. It's important to highlight that it still keeps it in the master plan, but simply moves it from short-term to long-term projects. It also calls for moving the fire station to the north side and making it solely for use on the airport in terms of ARF and aircraft firefighting. And so this letter is in response to that addendum. Since we took this draft letter to the Planning Commission, the city of Monterey has filed a lawsuit against the airport, a redemandate regarding the airport's addendum to their EIR, calling for them to do one of a few things. Either do a full EIR to fully analyze the impacts of what they're suggesting in their addendum, or rescind the addendum and go back to the status quo in their EIR, which would move the road from long-term to short-term through Delray Oaks. And it's unclear yet what the airport's going to do. And Alex and I have spoken. And obviously, when the time is right, we will go to closed session with council to discuss any strategy regarding the city of Delray Oaks. So the letter before you tonight went through the Planning Commission. There were edits suggested by some planning commissioners. There was some clarity provided in one of the paragraphs. There was public comment taken. Ken Rutherford's comment was heard by Planning Commission in detail. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to send the letter that's in your packet tonight. And we have received a letter from Ken, a comment letter, that we can discuss here at your pleasure. It staffs a strong recommendation to council that the important thing is that the council vote to submit a letter for the record on this matter. It sends an unambiguous message from the council. We already have an unambiguous message from the Planning Commission. And it makes it part of the official record. Whether that is the letter as proposed to you in the packet and suggested by Planning Commission or with edits, what Alex and I would just suggest is that you give direction to staff and that we be able to, if needed, modify the letter or not, and then get it to the mayor for signature so that we can submit it to the airport, rather than bringing it back for another public hearing. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, let's go to the council. Kristen?
Yes, I want to thank the Planning Commission for their work on this. I support the Planning Commission. I think they did a good job. And I would like to submit this letter. I think it's important to get this off. And so I'm in total favor of getting this letter to the airport board as soon as possible. So thank you to the Planning Commission.
Thanks. Pat?
Yes, I'm in agreement with what Kristen said, and I thank the Planning Commission. And I think that at this point, we need to let the airport know where we are and how we're objecting to things. And so I would recommend that the letter, as approved by the Planning Commission, be forwarded to the airport.
John?
I agree with the last two comments, is that I think it's more important just to get the letter to the airport that basically continues to express our, you know, our view. And so the quicker we can do that, the better. So send the letter as is.
Louise? I would like to thank the Planning Commission and Dino and the staff and for the work on the letter and Ken Rutherford for his detailed input. I think the time has come to put the airport on notice. I would like to see a copy provided to the FAA, since this is contrary, what the airport has done is contrary to what the FAA approved under the NEPA procedures, where they said no road at all through Delray Oaks. So I think the FAA needs to be reminded of our position and that the airport's action is contra to what they approved. So, and I think we can just do that by putting a note on the bottom saying, "Copy furnished to the FAA." That's it.
Okay, thanks. So I actually edited this letter before it went to the Planning Commission. So I appreciate the positive comments. And I also appreciated Ken's very detailed look at this letter. And I agree with many, many of his suggestions. And I would suggest actually eliminating the communication section and the number three, and keep it solely about the actual item that was shifted during their last meeting. What that would do, and there were a couple of other small little things, like there's a mention of an enclosure, the council meeting video link that needs to be deleted. Several of the requests would need to be deleted. And I think there needs to be a very strong comment similar to what Ken stated about, instead of asking them to delete any reference to the city, rather to say that a road through Delray Oaks is no longer a consideration as an alternative in both short-term or long-term plans. I think, I thought our attorney had reviewed this before I had a chance to take a look and edit it. And so I appreciate a lawyer's take on things. And so those are my comments. And I'd like to go out to the public. Any public comments on the letter? Doug?
Yes, thank you. First of all, it's my opinion that the Planning Commission had and has no jurisdiction over the matter of the letter to the airport. That's number one. Number two, neither the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission, rather, did not consider or incorporate Mr. Rutherford's comments. And in my opinion, neither the Planning Commission or the city council is really competent to address this issue, quite frankly. Kim Shirley, Ken Rutherford, and I and others have been attending the airport meetings, dealing with the airport board on all these matters. And the city manager and the mayor, I really don't know what you've all been doing regarding this matter. And I really think you ought to consider Mr. Rutherford's comments, because they're right on. And Mayor Allison Kerr, I really appreciate that you're considering those. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ken Rutherford?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. And thank you for reading the letter. It appears, at least, Mayor, that you did. I know that the Planning Commission, while they did not make any changes based on the comments I made, I'm hoping that the council members watch those Planning Commission meetings, because the council members, or, sorry, the Planning Commission members actually said that I had made some good comments, but at this point, they weren't going to make the changes and leave it up to council. But it looks like council is just going to send the letter through as it was written and sent up, despite the fact that the Planning Commission was asking you to consider my comments and make those changes. comments and make those changes. But you've not made any of those, other than the mayor, who apparently read my letter, detailed letter, and is suggesting some of the changes. So I would ask any of the council members, what does the location of the ARRF building have to do with the location of the road through Delray Oaks? Please address that one by one, if you would. Also, the other issues that I raised in my letter, could you at least address them for me as a resident, somebody that votes for you? Could you address some of the concerns I have and say why you're not recommending a change to the letter, based on them? All I was trying to do is to make the letter concise and address the point that we, as residents and a city, want, which is no road consideration. So please, I just kindly ask each council member to address why you're not recommending not one change that I made. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. What I'd like to do is go through the public comment, and then when we come back to council, everyone will have an opportunity to answer that. So I'd like to go to Kim Shirley next.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I wanted to speak to the recommendations you received in a letter that was sent by our resident Ken Rutherford, and express my support for his points that he makes within the letter, which is to keep this letter to the airport succinct and focused, only on our declaration against any road connection between Delray Oaks and the airport. As we can see from the previous letters, our north side road position was not the only topic that was addressed. The 2018 letter talked about noise and traffic. The letter sent this May was also focused on noise, the ARF location, the building of the hangars, and traffic on Airport Road, along with environmental contaminants. These topics are important, and they were done in connection with the environmental reports at that time. But really, the most important issue for Delray Oaks and the residents is the airport's access to the north side, specifically to not have it go through Delray Oaks. I would also suggest or argue that any suggestion of increased access to the north side would allow greater development, and therefore increase the likelihood that this development would cause increased noise and potential environmental issues for our residents next to the airport. In terms of our current letter, although I do like offering the solution of a roundtable to provide means of communication between the jurisdictions and the airport, I believe we should deliver a letter that is uncomplicated by other issues, and only addresses our emphatic and uncompromising demand that they designate that they will not pursue any potential access to the north side from Delray Oaks in their airport master plan. Again, as Ken suggests in the letter, asking them to publicly document that a road will no longer be considered, and either their short or long-term plans would be needed. After all, any access runs counter to our general plan, and because of that issue, will not be supported by the FAA. My hope is that in the future, we have a better relationship with the airport, and I'd like to think that the roundtable could be a keystone part of that relationship. I'd like to see the council edit the letter down to just a statement about the road, and then collectively decide to discuss with the public, and pursue the roundtable proposition with the airport and with the city of Monterey at another time. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Any other public comments? Actually, Susan, did you have? Okay, please.
Okay. Good evening, guys. So happy to see everyone. I'm Susan Magstall on Carlton Drive, and I would like to publicly thank Kim Shirley and give her a virtual award. I would like to give her the Nancy Drew Award for tirelessly reading the airport agendas and minutes, attending airport board meetings, and informing the residents of Delray Oaks through a campaign, yard signs, door-to-door sharing of information, when this was safe, of course, emails, and public comments about the airport's desire to put a road from 218 to the airport. Kim had help in her sleuthing. Gary Krieger, Ken Rutherford, and Douglas McKenzie also attended meetings and research minutes. Without these neighbors' efforts, the road would probably be a done deal. After Kim's no-go DRO campaign, the airport district board chair, Mary Ann Leffle, told our city council in person that the airport would not pursue a north side access road through Delray Oaks. Kim didn't stop reading minutes and discovered the airport board never took this action off the table, and had only moved the road from a short-range goal to a long-range goal. From talking with many neighbors, especially on Rosita Road, I was told repeatedly that if the road comes to fruition, that these residents will move. Just move. They won't attend city council meetings, write letters to the editor. I can't help but wonder what this would do to the property tax base through Delray Oaks. Those that can leave Rosita Road will, and those that can't, because of fixed incomes, for example, won't be able to. An access road would create marginalization of residents with a lower quality of life. So please join me in thanking and appreciating Kim Shirley in our community hearts. My next job will be figuring out how to make this Nancy Drew Award become something she can put on her fireplace mantle. Thanks to Kim, Ken, Gary, and Douglas. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, Susan. Dennis?
Thank you. I am, quite frankly, just really confused by the passion that people have for this airport road issue, which has been dead since Mayor Barlich was our mayor. The road through Delray Oaks was never sanctioned by the city of Delray Oaks. The airport district can go ahead and make all the plans they want, but that's the airport district, not the city of Delray Oaks. The city of Delray Oaks has consistently said, "You're not going to put a road through our property, our city." The airport does own that little piece of property next to the J. Rollins Building, but I just don't understand this overzealousness, in my opinion, of these attacks on the airport. You know, there is not going to be a road through Delray Oaks unless the airport somehow convinces some higher authority to override our jurisdictional powers, and I don't think that that's going to happen. So I don't know. I'm not sure where Ken Rutherford's edits are, if it's essentially saying, "Hey, look at folks, you haven't apparently heard us, you're not going to put a road through Delray Oaks." So I don't know where this is all going. It seems like a great deal of noise. I personally was irritated by the, what is it, the clutter I considered of signs along Rosita Road and throughout Delray Oaks. People just didn't understand, apparently, that the city has always had, at least for the last 30 years, I believe, close to 30 years, a position that says there's not going to be a road through Delray Oaks. Why are we doing this? Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other public comments? Douglas, do you have a hand?
Yes, I do, and I apologize for speaking twice on the same topic. I neglected to mention that Alice Angel Green and I filed a demand under the Brown Act with the airport district board, asking them to cure or correct, will we consider their unconstitutional infringement upon our rights to assembly and speak? And I presume that that may impact...
By the format.
Yeah, by the webinar format that they used. And just FYI, that may impact your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Kim, Karen, any hands, any waves? I'm not seeing any. All right, so we're going to come back to, I'm sorry?
Susan was waving at her.
Okay, Susan, you can do a second comment, but very short, please.
I will. I'm just really kind of confused about Dennis's last comment, because I was at city council last summer when Mike LaPierre came to the meeting and said that, in his opinion, this was a done deal. So if it wasn't for Kim Shirley at all, the implication that this was done. So I would love to have that cleared up. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. All right, any other public comment before we go back to council?
See Gary Krieger?
Gary, thank you. Thank you. Kim?
I guess to piggyback a little on what Susan says, there is, in fact, an email trail of comments by the previous mayor and council in negotiations with the airport over putting in the road. So it's just a little disingenuous for people to sit here and pretend like it was never brought up, because it was, and perhaps I'll just put them on the website, and people can read them. They're public records. They were provided to me through a couple different Freedom of Information Acts, California Records Request, and you can read them for yourself and make your own decisions. But they were pretty easy to read. It was pretty clear there was negotiations going on for the road, without any public discussion ever in the city council meeting. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Any other public comment before we go back to council? I'm not seeing any, so we're going to come back. So what I would like to do is make a motion to strike number one, number three off of the letter, add publicly document that a road through DRO is no longer a consideration as an alternative in both short-term or long-term plans, as the final sentence, and the elimination of the council meeting video link, which is not there. And so that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Can we please do a roll call?
Councilmember Getzelt?
I have a modification. I would like to see a separate letter, probably not necessarily from the council, to the airport concerning their lack of being a good neighbor and setting up some type of roundtable as a separate letter. And I still would like to have a copy sent, copy furnished to the FAA. Thank you.
I second.
Well, you accept that, so the two of us need to accept a friendly amendment. Do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
I will, too.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So the, yeah, so the friendly amendment, just to make sure that we're clear, is that we will, I'm sorry, Louise, can you make it?
Sure, we send, under separate communications, a letter to the airport expressing our displeasure at the current situation when it comes to communications. And the other amendment is that a copy of our letter concerning the amended airport master plan be furnished to the FAA to make sure that they also understand our displeasure.
Got it.
So I'm clear, it's a CC to the FAA?
Yes.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Getzelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Yes.
Councilmember Lintell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes. Wonderful, so approved. Alex, are you clear? Do you need...
Yeah, I was just going to confirm that the second letter would be signed by the mayor containing the direction that was provided.
Yes. All right, thank you. Now we're going to move on to item C, consider city manager leave of absence and appointment of Jeff Hoynes as acting city manager and Quis Porquin as acting chief of police. Mr. Pick?
All right, Madam Mayor, thank you so much, mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. I have the distinct honor to be asked to serve in a position of significant responsibility in the Pentagon. And I, it's really not my character to say no to that kind of call to service. And while it is a fairly sensitive personnel matter underway, and it is still underway, out of a sense of duty to this wonderful city that I serve, I briefed all my electeds, as well as all candidates running for office, as soon as I was made aware that this was something that was quite real. And so I'm before you this evening, asking for a leave of absence for a period through the middle of February, to allow me to go serve if indeed this process does come to fruition, as it appears to be doing. Once it is complete, the process, I, of course, am going to be happy to share much more detail with the community, as well as all of you. And I appreciate your consideration of this request. So that is the request for a leave of absence. It is, of course, an unpaid leave of absence with no benefits accruing, that would start at a date at some point in the not-too-distant future, but unknown at this time. Once it became specified, I would immediately notify the council of that date, and if approved tonight, trigger the leave of absence. The leave calls for my contract period with the city to be told during that period on a day-to-day basis, or day-for-day basis. And I believe that's, those are the highlights to the leave of absence. The second part of the request here is to ask the city council to consider an acting city manager agreement with Jeff Hoynes. Jeff has been working closely with me on a range of issues for several months now, as this process went from the most unlikely of things to somewhat more likely. The nature of the rhythm of projects with the city is such that Jeff, with our city team and consultant team, and of course, with access to me ongoing, is very, very capable of leading this city and serving as your city manager for the period of my leave of absence, if approved. The contract for him requests a pay increase to, from his current salary of $167,000 to $180,000 for the period that he's an acting city manager. And it outlines the clauses of his existing contract as police chief that remain operative and those that do not. And I apologize, before I started here, I was going to turn this over. Alex, would you please introduce your colleague?
Thank you, Dino. Mayor and members of the council, Susan Ashton from our office was instrumental, and by that I mean was responsible and did a fantastic job of drafting these agreements, and she is on the line now and available to answer questions.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
As with so many things in 2020, there's nothing convenient about this, there's nothing simple about it. But I would just stress that there's also nothing more to it than what I've said. It really is an honor to be asked to do what I would go do, and I'm asking to go do it for a limited period of time. Karen and I consider Monterey Peninsula our home, and I love serving the city of Delray Oaks, and look forward to returning and serving this council and a future council going forward. The other component to this staff report tonight, that I'd be remiss if I didn't mention for context, is that Kim has submitted her resignation effective October 9th, and we will, as a separate matter, on the next agenda item, consider a contract with RGS to provide financial services to the city going forward. We have a call scheduled with RGS pending approval by council tonight to drill down into the nitty-gritty of that workload and how it would happen. and how it would happen. It certainly, you know... I couldn't be happier. And I'm going to talk more about this later for Kim and her soon-to-be-joining her family in Phoenix. But it's certainly a consideration for the city in terms of the complexities of what's going on right now. And I'm talking closely with Jeff about how to work through this. And I think that my departure is not imminent in days, if at all, it's weeks. And I look forward to settling the contract into some degree of operation with Jeff before taking leave of absence. So I think that's an important matter to discuss for context. And I think with that, I'll pause and answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. Kristen?
I don't have any questions at this time. I'm happy to make this accommodation. I think that it's a well-thought-out plan. While you are on leave with this absence, it's unfortunate it is tied together with Kim leaving at the same time. I love you, Kim. I don't want you to go either. Dino, at least I know you're coming back. So that gives me... Gives me a good feeling. So I know this is important to you. I know that you wouldn't ask for this unless it was important to you. And I think that we are being left in very good hands. And I'm willing to grant you this. So thank you.
All right. Pat?
Yes. I think it's very commendable that you are answering the call of our country. I think that is so important. And the fact that this is happening certainly points out what we all know is how good you are at what you do. And I just can't say enough good about you. But this has certainly pointed it out, the fact that you would be requested by the US government to come and help out in the situation for our country. And looking forward to your return.
Louise? I'm kind of disappointed that we'd be losing you, but honored that we have such a great manager that we're fighting over you, so to speak. And it's important to support our country and our warriors that are protecting our country. And I know that that's very dear to your heart because you have a couple of warriors yourself in your family. And, you know, reluctantly, I would support your leaving. And if you're not back in the office by the 16th of February, I have friends in Washington DC that carry guns.
Don?
I just echo everything that the last three council members said. And, Dino, I mean, quite honestly, I'm ecstatic for this opportunity. And, I mean, the issues we have here, we'll manage. The issues that we're dealing with in DC, I think they could really use your help. And so I welcome that they're reaching out and asking for adults to come help them. So I support this 100%.
All right. I have some questions. Can you tell us what is coming up over the next four months?
Sure, Mayor. The foretag will be going through a selection of design and construction teams. Jeff and I have already been in on the initial selection process round with TAMSE. We have an appointment on Friday, this Friday, to interview the finalists. The TAMSE board on which you serve will award a contract probably in the next month to 45 days to a firm. And TAMSE will begin the process of some public outreach with that firm regarding our segment. So certainly, that will be some workload. The advantage we have there is we have TAMSE as the lead agency. And we have some amazing talent there in the form of Rich Deal, Stephanie Castillo, Todd Muck, and Debbie Hale, that are all pulling with us to make this trail segment a success. But that's certainly an important project that will be moving through the next four to five months during my leave. Tonight's decision and presentation regarding South Boundary Road sets the table for some important staff work to continue over the coming months. There will be an important engagement with the public and the council, as Aaron referred to and I referred to, at some point during my leave. Again, the team is in place and I believe capable of handling that engagement. The housing element work that Denise Duffy and Associates is doing over the next several months will continue, funded by our LEAP grant. And I've been talking with Jeff about all of that. And we have an appointment with Denise to really drill down into her staff work in some detail. That will be coming back to council or that will be coming to council at some point after the election for a discussion about the site suitability analysis and potential work going forward on ADU ordinances and the like. This RGS contract with finance is important. It's important that we get it right and that we get it in place so that our financial business is solid. And I think that will be a really important thing for Jeff to shepherd. And I think he's capable of doing it. And I look forward to helping him set the sort of the foundations on that relationship before departing... If I depart. Again, this is not a completely done deal. And those are the major matters that come to mind. There is, of course, you know, it's 2020. So it wouldn't surprise me if we have a wildfire or locust or something crazy go on. But the team is solid. It really is. And it's why I want to come back. It's a great team.
Okay. Thank you. And can you answer why... This may be Alex. Why we're changing his annual figure instead of doing something like a bonus or something like that?
Mayor, with respect to the acting city manager agreement, it's certainly an option. I think a bonus would speak to perhaps a contemplated fixed amount of time. My understanding is that the leave is fluid and therefore, it seems to me that a salary adjustment that would be concurrent with the actual leave would be the best approach towards that.
Okay. So I have some contract suggestions. But what I'd like to do is go out to the public first. So any public comment? I see Nikki. Kristen, can I come back to you when we come back? Sorry. Nikki, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, Dino, congratulations on accepting a challenging position, I guess, or challenging role in what sounds like a difficult situation. I do have a couple of questions related to the California Native Plant Society litigation and the planned mediation session for November 5th. Obviously, you won't be able to join the mediation session, Dino. But you have a wealth of knowledge related to the CNPS litigation and the status of Plant Reserve 1 North. I know Alex certainly will be present. Would it be possible for you to be accessible by phone during that mediation session in the event we have a question that you would be ultimately the best source to ask?
Yeah. Mayor, if I may. Nikki, that's a great question. My goal here is that if council approves this tonight and my appointment is finalized and I go, that consistent with federal ethics regulations regarding any kind of work outside of the role I would be in there and compliant with the rules and regulations of my contract with the city, I would be delighted to make myself accessible to Jeff and the city, not only on this matter, which is very important, and I understand exactly what you're saying for all the reasons you're saying them, but for other matters as well that come up that require some institutional knowledge. So I just... You know, we've talked through this a little bit. And I haven't fully been briefed on the do's and don'ts on the federal side yet. And so I just... There may be some... I suspect there are some red lines regarding what you can and can't do. And I just don't know what those are yet.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that very much.
All right. Ken Rutherford?
Thank you. I guess my question is, what are the prospects, Dino, of this becoming more than a temporary position and something that's going to keep you there permanently? And if you know what those prospects might be? And the second thing is, have we done everything we possibly can as a city to ask Kim, even though we congratulate her on retiring, to ask Kim what it would take for her to stay until you returned? To make it a win-win? Something that she would like and something that would be great for the city? She has 20 years of knowledge. And having her stay until you return would be a good thing. So I hope we've pulled out all the stops to keep Kim. Thank you.
Yeah. I appreciate that, Ken. Well, we'll continue to have a discussion with her because, you know, never say never. But I think, you know, knowing what we know about her and her family, this is the right move for her at the right time. And so we support it 100% while we will do everything we can to reasonably keep her. Ken, I think it's a wonderful gesture and it's not lost on me what it would do for the city as well. I can only say this. Look, Karen's staying here. My wife is staying here. And she said, you know, "Come home when you're done." And she's said that before, and it's always worked out. So that's what we're going to do. I don't... There are so many variables at play here right now that it really makes my head spin if I start to think about too many of them. So I focus on the known, which is still pretty finite. And what I know is I very much look forward to returning to the city. And I'm asking for a leave of absence through the middle of February. And I will, of course, keep in touch with the mayor, the council, and Jeff as I... If I go, as I get into the job and understand it better and any changes become possible, I'll be discussing that with the mayor and council as early as possible to give both of us the decision space we need to make good decisions about the city's welfare and my future as well.
Wonderful. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. This is Douglas McKenzie from 16 South Sido. And I agree with Ken Rutherford that chances are that the city manager won't return. In fact, I don't... Just notwithstanding what he said, I don't see why he would. But in any case, the other question I have or concern that I have is that I'm wondering if this creates an opportunity for the city to cut some fat from the budget? And the reason I say that is when the city manager took a vacation, I think it was in August, I'm not sure, July or August, Mr. Hoynes, Chief Hoynes, was appointed as the acting city manager. And now, it's proposed that Chief Hoynes act as the acting city manager for four months. So it seems to me that we have two positions that we're paying for, a city manager and the chief of police, when in fact, there's only enough work for one position. So that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Dennis?
Thank you. Douglas, you clearly don't understand much of anything about how a city is run. Dino has done an extraordinary job. He's done multiple individual jobs. I want to... I can recall when we last had a chief of police fill in for years, for years, as our city manager. That led to some of the problems that we inherited or survived through during the 2000, the 2010 period when our chief of police was filling in as our city manager. Yes, we saved a few bucks and we needed to at that time because we didn't have the resources we needed. We... It was a tremendous burden on our chief of police to be both the city manager and the chief of police. I think people that make the comments like Douglas make just have no concept of what the work is that's involved. Dino works extraordinary hours. You have no clue as to how many hours he actually puts in. And all I can say to you, Dino, is thank you for your service. And also, you better get some sleep now because you're not going to get it in DC. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any further public comments?
I don't see any.
I... Kim Shirley?
Yeah.
All right. Just last minute. Dino, congratulations. I do support you leaving on this important mission. So thank you for serving our country. And I do think it's an opportunity for others to grow as well in their positions. And so I support that, too. But I would like to... I feel like the costs were a little unclear in the agenda packet. So I'm just wondering if you could review that because it sounds like we're going to save money. So I'm just wondering what the fully burdened cost of your leave is. And if you can just kind of go into that. Like, I'm wondering, what are you not getting? And what are others getting in return?
Yeah. Thanks. Kim, I'm happy to elaborate on that. It would be a net savings to the city of approximately $69,000 over a roughly four, little over four-month period. The savings for my fully burdened rate, which includes all benefits as well as salary, sum to $77,334. The salary increase of $13,000. And by the way, we're also... I'm sorry, I didn't brief this in the presentation. It's in the report. We're also recommending that Commander Chris Burkwin be made the acting chief of police because the issue that Dennis Allian raised previously, absolutely spot on, where we start to get ourselves into some serious potential trouble is when we start to dual hat over a long period of time. The only two executives you have in this city, and that's the city manager and the chief of police. And so what we're trying to do in this suggestion, in this scenario, is move Jeff Hoynes into an acting city manager role and with all of those duties and responsibilities, which are significant. And then make Chris Burkwin the acting chief of police with all of those authorities and responsibilities, which are also significant. And Kim, thanks for raising the point of sort of the professional development aspect of this opportunity. It is significant. I'm definitely going to get professionally developed in Washington. And Jeff Hoynes and Chris Burkwin are definitely going to get professionally developed here in very positive ways with as much mitigation to risk as we can put in place regarding any potential downside. They'll be better for it. I think the city will be better for it for having employees that are developed. So thanks for raising that point. So based on the recommendation of pay raise for the acting city manager and the acting chief of police, which are $13,000 annually and $12,000 annually, respectively, for the leave period, that sums to about $8,300 in total salary increase during the leave period for both Jeff and Chris Burkwin, which brings the... leave period for both Jeff and Chris Berquen, which brings the the savings from 77,000 to 69,000, just over $69,000. And so that's that's the that's the savings the city would realize over that over that period. And then separately, we'll discuss in the next staff report the cost of the RGS contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Krieger.
Yeah, thanks. Dino, best of luck out there and look forward to hearing the war stories when you get back from Pentagon. That's that's the worst kind. If you were talking just now, with Keith fleeing up and with Chris fleeing up, I know we, last month, we talked about the position we took off the the force. A second position we're taking off, or is that going to, is that going to play into this at all? Or I'm just curious.
Right. Jeff, I'm really going to hand this off to you in a minute so you can unmute and think about your response. But I will say that we we just brought on Kyle Baum back to to our police force as a full-time reserve or as a reserve officer, level-one reserve officer. And and that that goes a long way towards speaking to Jeff Hoynes' leadership and the and the caliber of the police department and and frankly, the nature of our community as it relates to your police officers. Kyle's over in PG, but he wants to work here in in DRO as a as a reservist. So Jeff, you want to elaborate on on staffing and manning in the PD?
Sure. Hey, Gary, the technically, we will be removing the chief of police position from the police department and putting the commander in an acting position. Now, while it'll be a reduction of one full-time member, what the commander will be doing is he will be part of our regular patrol operations and response. He will still be working during a day shift where he can respond to calls, kind of what he's doing right now as the commander, as a shift supervisor position. However, we just had Officer Jeff Andoy complete his training program. He was our 10th officer. We were actually down two up until about a week ago. So Jeff is deployed as a solo officer that actually brings our staffing up one from where it was. He's going to be taking the commander's position on day shift. And then the commander will basically serve as the third officer that we've been working towards, getting up to fully staffed, a fully staffed position. He'll respond to calls as necessary or in emergencies. But we will have basically two officers on day shift, an airport officer, a city officer, and the commander, serving as the acting chief, but also as a supervisory and and a response capacity if necessary in uniform. The other thing is, is not only have we hired Kyle Baum back, and he'll be ready to go within a couple of weeks of training, if that, because he's so familiar with our operations and our policy manual. We were recently lucky to hire Andrew Durkis, who is a former Marine Corps major, has a master's degree, and was a reserve officer with the city at Seaside, very high-quality officer, offered full-time officer offers from Monterey Seaside, but his life works better as a reserve officer. And he chose Delray Oaks to come here. So we've added two outstanding reserve officers. We have the deployment of Officer Andoy into a full-time position. We're actually probably going to be better staffed than we have in the last year, waiting to fill those two positions and also get people through training. I don't see an impact, as a matter of fact, even when with with the proper management of our budget, when we need reserve officers to save on overtime, if somebody's going to training or if they're sick, we we should be able to keep a higher level of service for a lower cost than we were able to last year. Hope that answers your question. Hope it wasn't too worry.
Oh, yeah. No, that's great. No, I'm really worried that the answer is exactly. I just, it occurred to me, you guys were talking just now about moving the pieces, it's like, but no, that answered my question. Thanks.
Mayor, you muted.
Thanks. Any other public comment before we go back to council? Frederica.
Congratulations, Dino. What a great opportunity for you. I'm sure your wife will miss having you here, but I wish you well. I do have a question, and Alex, maybe you can address this, is the benefits, I heard that there was going to be suspended benefits. Does that include the deferred compensation that's being paid and the car payment that's part of the contract? And also, does that change anything else in the existing contract for our city manager?
So the question is, is, does he continue to accrue the the deferred compensation, the retirement? Yeah, Susanna, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is he does not.
That's correct, because everything is just put on hold.
So there's no scene as far as the end of the contract. If the contract goes through June 30 of 2021, that's still the end of the contract, correct?
No, under the terms that we currently have, everything's extended until December 15, I believe, 2021. So everything is really just put on hold for four months and shifted forward for four months.
All right. Any other public comment? I am not seeing any. We'll go back to the council. Thank you, Kristen, for your patience.
You brought up a point about paying it out as a bonus, and I do not believe that bonuses are perceivable. I think that we should continue down the road of increasing their salaries for the work that they do. I don't think a bonus doesn't, I think these people are all working, so I was not in favor of doing anything different from what has been presented. As far as, I forget what brought it up, maybe it might be for the next item, but the one thing that Kim can't do, yeah, it applies for the next item, I was just talking about, I was talking about who's going to do the acorn. We can contract with Kim to do the acorn. Or contract with her to do other specialty things that she that she does, that it's unique to her. I know the acorn is very unique to her, and so I would have no objection with the money that we're saving to have her still get the acorn out because that's very important to the citizens. That's all.
All right. So I had some, some, first and foremost, I work with a lot of retired military, and I completely understand the pull and the drive that you just can't say no to. And to be honored with an SES position at the Pentagon is very unique and very rare and and Lord knows, we need good people back in the federal government right now. So I completely support you in that. I do have, you know, I've also worked with government contracts, and I have some suggestions to not only tighten the contract, but also to protect the city and you ultimately because life changes. And there's a lot of of things up in the air right now, it sounds like. I would definitely prefer an effective date before we vote on this. Makes me very concerned to keep it open like that. I would like the addition of the words "one-time, non-extensible" at the beginning of number one, line two. I, and number three, I do not understand why we would toll this. This is a special, unique request that you are asking, and I don't see renegotiating the time as appropriate. And number four confuses me a little because you, the city manager receives all of their leave on July 1st. So there would, so either we, you know, would go in and take back a third of that or we make some other kind of agreement on that. And number five, in the contract currently, there is a 45-day written notice that I would like to to retain. I think for the city, we need to know if you're coming back or not, especially you're going to get back there and you're going to do a great job, and they're going to offer it. And so I would like a 40-day notice, written notice, back in there rather than a just, you know, we have to wait until February 16th. And there was also a statement in chief's contract that I would like to have added as well. It says, "Employees shall not engage in any business, educational, professional, charitable, or other activities that would conflict or materially interfere with city manager duties except as authorized or requested by the city council." I would also like that added to the contract. And if those were all changed, I would be 150% behind this shift. But my job is to make sure that the city is protected, and that helps me feel better about all, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Your situation is uncertain, and I want to be able to have a little certainty for the city right now. So, thank you. So that, I'll make a motion.
May I, may I comment before you make a motion?
Yep.
So, Mayor, I didn't catch all those as as we went through. But in in general terms, the the last one regarding outside employment or our charitable work is in my contract, my existing contract. Are you suggesting we add it to this?
No, I haven't seen that. But if it is, that's wonderful. Great.
It's in my existing contract. Yeah, and I think, I think, look, the, the, and you're, you know, you're certainly thinking about the city's perspective here, and I can understand that. And and I, and while I absolutely appreciate that, I do, given all of this uncertainty in 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 my life as well, need to to retain some, some, some level of of protection for myself. And and I think that while I'm, what I'd like to do, if you wouldn't mind, is I'd like you to walk through those one more time so I can really digest them before. So I got the one-time, non-extendable.
And that goes at the the beginning of line two on number one.
Got it.
Okay. My preference would be to have an effective date, but I can let that one go. I would like, you had indicated it in the conversation that you would let the city council know, but in the contract, it only indicates the, Alex? And could we just simply state and city council? So we're all very aware of the effective date?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I am not in favor of tolling the contract. I think this is a special request, and I think we need to renegotiate that at the right time.
Okay, well, yeah, I would, there was a broader renegotiation that could have happened that I didn't want to have happen, that I look forward to touching base with my my next eval. But but tolling the tolling the period is 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 meaningful to me because of my my desire to serve the city. So I would, I would ask that one remain. That's just my opinion there. What else was there, Mayor?
Number four, your leave is all allocated as of July 1st. And so there's a state, the number four talks about, you know, it will be unpaid as far as accrued vacation and shall not continue to accrue.
Yeah, we should probably correct that, Alex. That's a one-time, I believe is just allocated at once, so I don't think that's perceived to be deducted for the four-month period. At least, that's the way I read that.
Right. That's how I read it. And I think, you know, you are in a certain category where you do get them all at once.
Right, and it just accrues. Got it.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Hannah.
Sorry, I was just, I was trying to see where you were reading, but I see it's that last, last sentence, and I can understand you'd want to take that out.
Okay.
Is that right? That the very last clause of paragraph four? Last sentence.
The vacation shall not continue.
Shall not continue to accrue. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just was trying to follow along.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want it clear.
Absolutely.
But I'd also be curious as to, you know, do we receive a third of a year back on your leave and admin leave and things like that if you're not here? Maybe that's a question for Susanna and Alex.
So I had, I mean, just my my read on it was, since mine is is given all at the beginning of a year, that it not be deducted by by portion, but so will the council.
And also, you, vacation benefits are like pay, you can't take it back. Once he has it, he has it.
Okay. And then I would like, number five, to, I guess, be deleted and keep us with a 45-day notice period as your current contract states.
Just trying to think about the implications of that, Mayor. I mean, as a practical matter, I'm going to try to keep the city informed, obviously, of anything happening. If I'm not back on February 16th, I'm not employed by the city any longer. And I would give you as much notice as possible if that were ever to become the plan, which it currently is not.
But I would like some notice. I mean, for you, you know, and I understand that your intent is to come back and your intent would be to let us know, but I would like something in writing in a contract. You know, I'm fine to do 30 days, but I think it's it's reasonable. You have the senior executive position for the city, and I think we need to know whether you're coming back or not.
So you'd like a 30-day notice?
That's fine.
Of not coming back?
Yes. Yeah, so it would be a 30-day, yeah, just like, you know, when you're leaving a job, you would give us 30 days. And so at at day 29, we know you're coming back.
Right. Yeah, I think I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so the only area of difference is number three.
Yeah, the tolling.
Yeah.
And you want it to be one-time, non-extendable? Is that what you wanted to?
Yeah.
To put in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with the one-time, I'm fine with everything except the tolling, I think, if, if, you know, if the council would indulge on the tolling of the period, that's that's about the only thing that.
Can you tell us a little more as to why?
I would look forward to coming back and serving out that that contract term. And given that the And given that the period of the next four months is without pay and benefits, you know, we're essentially putting the contract in a stasis. Which I appreciate a great deal, by the way. I don't want to trivialize that.
I'm a little concerned that, that, let's hear what other council members have to say.
Okay.
Kristin?
You know, it's unfortunate that we didn't, we didn't have this conversation with Dino directly to kind of negotiate this stuff. I don't know where Alex and Savannah stand on all of this. We could be here all night going over a contract, contract negotiations. So I think in the future, it would be good to get with Dino ahead of time and go over some of these details so that you two can have a more candid conversation with this. But, you know, maybe Savannah wants to chime in. I think Dino has the intent of coming back. You know, 30 days' notice, that's fine. But I still think that this type of conversation would have really been helpful to have prior to this meeting so you could iron out some of your personal details.
Thanks. Pat?
Yes, but I guess I think that it should be extendable. If Dino is needed to serve our country, say, for an extra month, I would, or, you know, any period of time, I would love to keep that open so that he could extend it because I would just love to have him back here. He has done so much for our city. And likely, the quality of this gentleman is evidenced by his request to go to the Pentagon. And to be able to extend it for a month in order to have Dino back here, that would be fine with me. But I, so I don't see any reason for having it non-extendable in the contract.
John, Alex has his hand up. Do you mind if I go to him first? Okay, Alex?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to the non-renewable, there's nothing that says the city and the city manager can't renegotiate at the conclusion of this agreement. So while this agreement would not be renewable, there's nothing that would say, you know, the city and the city manager could agree otherwise before the expiration of this agreement.
Okay, thank you. John?
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with council member Clark's comments. And I think, Mayor, I mean, this is really bad form. I mean, you could have done, you talked to Dino at length and this is just a hit job. And I actually want to do this. I make a motion to accept all the contracts that have been provided just as is, and let's just vote on that right now.
I'll second that.
Okay, Louise, any comments?
I can understand some of your concerns, but I do think that Dino being an officer and a gentleman, retired or not, understands the importance of letting, oh, God, did we learn that in the military, of letting people know and giving people heads up of how important that is. And I think extending his term of contract by the period of his leave of absence is a fair thing to do and the right thing for the city. So I support the contracts as are.
Okay. Roll call, please.
What are we actually vying on? Was that seconded?
Yeah, as the maker of the motion, I move that we accept the contracts as presented to us in the staff report.
Thank you.
And Kristin seconded it.
Council member, council member Getzelt?
Yes.
Council member Gagliotti?
Yes.
Council member Lintel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
I have to say no. So it passes four to one. Let's move on to the next item, which is consider contracting with regional government services for financial services. Dino?
Thank you, Mayor. The issue before you tonight is to consider approving a financial services agreement with regional government services for financial services. We have experience with RGS from an HR perspective as well as project management and Roberto Moreno, our current, and I think Roberto's on the line tonight, financial consultant, has joined RGS and the contract with Roberto was going to transition to an RGS contract anyway in the months ahead. With Kim's retirement and departure, it speeds the need to do that and provides us an opportunity to enter into a contract with RGS that's broader in terms of financial services. And so the services envisioned are described on page one of the staff report. Accounts payable, payroll, bank reconciliations, audit support, accounts receivable, CalPERS processing, and council financial reporting. The fiscal impact of the report is that we're asking for a not-to-exceed amount of $131,000 for the fiscal year. This includes $35,000 previously budgeted for Mr. Moreno's services as well as $96,000 for the duties of the deputy city treasurer. The current salary and benefits for the city treasurer fully burdened is $140,000 annually. The implementation of this agreement would yield a $44,000 annual net savings to the city. Again, Roberto's on the line with us. Kim has, oh, I'm sorry, Kim, this was your staff report. Good gracious.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. Nope, go right ahead.
All right. Okay, I was just going to say that Kim put this staff report together. She put this whole item together and she was going to present it tonight.
Old habits die hard, Dino. It's okay.
Sorry. Yeah, that last one threw me for a loop a little bit. So anyway. So the issue before us this evening for council is to consider approval of the RGS contract. Jeff, Kim, Roberto, and I will be convening on the phone to, with other RGS finance staff to do a dive into precise sort of implementation of the agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have or have Roberto and Kim address questions.
Great. So Kristin?
Well, it looks pretty straightforward. I don't have any questions. You know, again, a contract is nice. We don't have, you know, perks and other benefits that are payable out with contracts like this, so. So I guess the only question I have is, long-term, this is just going to be, are we going to look for another position like Kim's? Or are we just going to try and stick with this?
Kristin, that's a great question. If I may answer, our desire is to test the contract and do it through mid-year budget through February. See how RGS is performing, see how responsive they are, and just report to you at mid-year with a status. If it's working, it'll be wonderful to outsource a lot of this finance function. Some questions in my mind that we'll have some better answers to tomorrow are, what if any thing will they not be able to do that would lead to an increased workload on Karen, rather, and on our part-timer Randy? And whatever that is, is it tenable, feasible, and, you know, executable over time? So this is, in my mind, this is a test that if it's successful, will be a good way to trim costs and adjust how our model for handling the finance portfolio. And quite frankly, if it's not working, and we won't wait till mid-year if it's not working, we'll come back to you with other recommendations that may include a recruitment and a trimming of this contract. But we'd like to try the contract model.
Thank you. Or we can try and ask Kim to come back. But anyway, no, great, thank you. That was a great, great answer.
Pat?
Who's going to do the acorn?
Actually, Randy. Yeah, yeah. Randy's going to do it?
Randy is doing the acorn right now. You know, we're going to see. We're going to see how it works. And he's doing great. He's energetic. He's no Kim Carvalho. And so we're going to see how that works out for us. And I love the idea of potentially having Kim do it for us over time, and we'll explore that.
Kim, you can't go.
Making it difficult, that's for sure.
Anything else, Pat, about the contract?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, John?
Good.
Okay, Louise?
I think it's a great opportunity to look at an alternate method of doing business and a good way of testing the waters. And even though we're sorry, definitely going to miss Kim, but this is a good, a good way to look at potential other options for our future. So I'm all good for it.
Great. All right. And I have worked with Roberto on the finance committee and find him very capable and ready to do this. Dino, I thought there was, was there a clause that said we were going to review this in February?
It says so in the staff report. The contract itself allows for, I believe, a 30-day notice.
So is there any advantage to just giving them six months of funding first?
I mean, since we can terminate with 30 days' notice, Mayor, I don't see a need to truncate it unnecessarily. I mean, if it's not working, we're going to, we're going to go a different direction and we just need to give them 30 days' notice. Our hope is that it does. And if we're moving forward, then we won't need to reappropriate funds or extend the contract.
Okay. So let's go out to the public. Any questions in the public? Douglas?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I noticed on the check register that was provided in the meeting packet that by check number 19273 payable to RGS in the amount of $2,862.50 for contract services was made. I'm not sure if this was in June or July, but in any case, I'm not sure. But you know me, I'm a fairly suspicious person. And this seems to fit a pattern where processes and agreements are made and then presented to the council for their rubber stamp. That's how it seems to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Ken?
Yes, thanks for the opportunity. Again, I'm going to plug pushing for Kim to stay. I know that we, earlier tonight, found $60-something thousand dollars and maybe we can entice her to stay with some of that money for a little bit longer until Dino returns. I know we keep saying that, but again, she's clearly got a lot of knowledge and value. And just want to make sure we've done everything we can to see if we could make her stay at least until Dino's return. Also, I just wanted to thank the mayor for looking out for the city in looking at that contract and would suggest that the other council, if they're not happy with the way it's going in public, request a closed session hearing rather than cut off debate because you are looking out for the city. And that's what I think the mayor was doing. He supports Dino and her comments. Clearly, she supports him. She's looking out for the city. Wish you would as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Any other public comments? I don't see any hands. All right, let's come back. Actually, I'd like to ask Roberto. Roberto, how, when did you go to RGS and are you looking forward to doing this? I mean, you've worked with Kim for years.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This has been discussed with Dino for some time. I actually have other agencies that I work with. I've already transitioned them to RGS. My contacts with other agencies have moved to RGS. Dino also will be the last of my own businesses that I used to have that are being transitioned over to RGS and since this is all taking place, we decided to do it all at the same time.
Right. Well, thank you. All right, let's come back to council. Any comments? Kristin? Okay?
No.
Pat?
I'm fine, thank you.
John?
I just think we need to point out that we already have, as stated at the beginning, we already have a contract with RGS to provide some other services. We are doing a separate contract for the financial services now. So the check that Mr. McKenzie was talking about was for services that we had contracted for and the city council approved prior. But I am in support of this contract for financial services.
Great. I just want to ask Alex to chime in there. The city does have a request for proposal process, but the city council apparently can also do a sole source. Can you talk a little bit about that and how that factors into this decision or not?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. Generally, with professional services, the procurement process is not applicable. That is, when you're going out for professional services, attorneys, engineers, finance, that type of thing, something along the lines of RGS. The bidding requirement doesn't apply. I'd have to review our code specifically, but that's generally the way that works.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Louise?
I move that we accept the contract with RGS.
Was that John?
Sure.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Council member Getzelt?
Yes.
Council member Gagliotti?
Aye.
Council member Lintel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes, it's approved unanimously. All right, we'll move on to staff reports, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and council. I'd like to start with just talking a little bit about Kim. You know, it's, it is not even close to an overstatement to say that while I'm honored to go serve in the Pentagon and do whatever it is we're going to be doing there and it's important and all of that, that the work we do here in this city, taking care of our 1,650 residents, is a passion for all of us. And it's no bigger a passion for any employee on your city staff than Kim Carvallo. She bleeds DRO. It's evident. And it's been an absolute blessing to be associated with her for the past three years. And it's been an absolute blessing to be associated with her for the past three years. Truly, truly been a pleasure to work with you, Kim. And I just, you know, in the climate that we're in, given our stalwart reporters' various comments earlier in the meeting about various aspects of public service here, you know, it's easy to be very cynical about public service these days and suspicious and quite toxic. And in some cases, the public officials earn that in spades and should absolutely get taken to the woodshed. The challenge we face in today's environment is that many, many, many good honorable public servants get treated horribly. And that's happened here. It's happened to Kim. And my goodness, I hope it stops. She leaves us with an enormous hole in our city staff. But she leaves with our absolute best wishes for her to rejoin her daughter and her grandson in Phoenix, where I know she'll be much, much happier than she is in her apartment with her pets in Pacific Grove. And so, Kim, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your honorable, passionate, consistent commitment to this city for nearly 20 years. And it's been my distinct pleasure to spend the last three of them with you up close and personal on a day-to-day basis with all the hijinks that that's brought us. So thank you. Moving on to the body of the report. Tamsi convened a panel to review proposals for the design and construction of our Fortag segment. I was invited to participate, and Jeff Hoin joined me on the initial interview round. We look forward to continuing that process this Friday. Staff will meet separately with Tamsi to discuss the status of the trail segment through Delray Oaks as it relates to the Delray Garden Center and specifically our supplemental agreement with Tamsi regarding the trail segment for Fortag through our city. We received our Tree City USA signs. And if Kim or Karen, I'm not sure who's gonna share a screen here, but I think we've got a picture to share. Here it is. So this is a product of a lot of hard work on Karen Minami's part, getting us certified as a Tree City USA. And it's so appropriate and long overdue for a city of our name and the pride we take in not only our Oaks but all our trees. And of course, Ron took great pleasure in posting them at entry points to our city. And they look fabulous. I mentioned earlier Kyle Baum is joining our police force again. We're over the moon at his return. And also, our general staffing and PD is probably healthier than it's ever been at this point, which is great, even considering the one frozen position. We are fully staffed up to that level. Want to update the public and the council on an interaction that we're having with a prospective buyer of the Monterey Bay Alternative Medicine Dispensary. It's pretty exciting. They are interested in buying the building, the underlying ground, and acquiring the business. So we're in the process of discussing with them the mechanics of the transfer of the cannabis business permits for both the dispensary and the distribution license, the conditional use permit transfer and the business license transfer. The land purchase is going ahead. Should close escrow in about 30 days. This buyer brings with him financing and energy. And a good indicator is that he is making the longtime general manager there, Krista, who we've dealt with for several years, a shareholder in that business, which I find an indicator of his commitment to keeping her on and growing that business and having it thrive. He's shown us initial architectural drawings for facade improvements to the exterior as well as landscaping. If it turns out to be half as good as it looks on paper, it's gonna be a magnificent improvement there. And we look forward to that coming to the Planning Commission for Architectural Review, Design Review, at the appropriate time. Ron continues to work his magic in the city, keeping it not only beautified and clean but also running smoothly. He's working hard to get some crews back out here to help with fuel reduction. We lost crews due to the wildfires. They were called away for far more impressive work. And we look forward to getting them back. One of our cleaning staff, who's been a longtime contract cleaning staff with the city, came down with COVID-19. The gentleman is in his 70s. He's in great shape. His proximity to City Hall and our interaction set us into a little bit of a really good drill on contact tracing ourselves and getting in for testing, isolating, and then returning to work once we had negative results. I'm pleased to report that his condition is good. He's healthy, back on his feet, COVID-negative. No long-term impacts from the virus, thankfully. And lastly, I'd just like to report that the city managers continue to meet regularly regarding the full range of issues regionally that are affecting all of us, from wildfires, the associated smoke and air quality impacts, even though we haven't been touched directly by fire, thank goodness, pandemic response, and other issues. The county with Charles McKee continue to interact with us very well. And so this 2020 series of crises have brought us together as city managers and county staff in ways that we hadn't foreseen before. And lastly, you know, just a recognition that our community continues to respond so, so well to all the pressures, you know, whether it be the pandemic, the pandemic-induced economic impacts and recession, the wildfires, the calls for racial justice, and all of those compressed into an election year of pretty unprecedented import. You know, there still continues to be wonderful examples of good nature and of humanity in all of this that I'm proud to be associated with. Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Dennis, are you there and prepared to give your report?
I'm prepared, yes, thank you. Very briefly, the Monterey Regional Waste Management District did not have a meeting in August. We did have one this month. And the only significant item, I think, that is of immediate interest to the public is that the Last Chance Mercantile, as many people may know, has been closed since the COVID crisis began. And the staff has been looking at alternatives, ways to reopen it while keeping appropriate social distancing in place and figuring out ways to make the operation more efficient. So they're continuing to study that. They're looking at options of partnering with another nonprofit, just possibly reopening it as a part of the Monterey Regional Waste Management District Operations and rehiring staff to operate that. But progress on that has been moving forward. It's maybe not as fast as people would like. The Last Chance Mercantile is something that a lot of people enjoyed using, and it was a great way to recycle materials. But we'll hope that this gets resolved in the next month or two and that we can get back to having a Last Chance Mercantile operation. Other than that, the landfill continues to operate with a reduced staff. There were, I think, about 18 positions that were furloughed. Most of those were associated with the Last Chance Mercantile. And some positions were discontinued because of some redundancy in work. So their staff is doing its job of controlling costs and keeping the costs down. Regardless of that happening, in order to meet bond covenants and repay debt, there is a slight increase in tipping fee that will be affecting us again in an almost negligible way when it comes to our local pickup of the trash and recyclable material. I don't think we're gonna see that, though, until next summer when the prices are renegotiated with the contractor. That's my report. Thank you.
Closed. Your line. Okay, so Monterey One had two meetings last month. The Recycled Water Committee recommended to the board $230,000 contract for SCADA Services for the continued RTP, which is the wastewater treatment plant and the Pure Water Monterey Project integration. That's a bigger job than was anticipated. So that contract got extended. Monterey One, the Pure Water Monterey update is that it's still kind of limping along. The shallow wells are both shut in. And the two deep wells are still operating between 40% and 60%. They are both being, both the deep wells, Deepwell 1 and 2 are being swabbed, which is something we did with the ASR project, which is they basically take the entire well apart, clean it out, and then put it back in. And then that should hopefully, yeah, well, hopefully that'll bring back some of the capacity that we expect, about 85%. With that, we've made the decision that we do need another deep well. So Deepwell Number 3 and Deepwell Number 4, which is we'll be adding two new deep wells, have been approved by the board and are now seeking funding. So the state has stepped up and has offered to pay for, well, we're getting all indications that they've offered to pay for Deepwell Number 3, which is about a $6 million endeavor. The Water Management District has agreed to pay $2 million for Deepwater 4, or Deepwell 4. And so the aggregate there is $8 million, and we'd be short a couple of million. And so we'll be probably going back to the state for the balance of that. Design and permitting efforts have started. And then bearing no issues, between now and when Deepwell Number 3 and 4 are drilled, we should be, the Pure Water Monterey Project should be coming online in spring of 2021, about 17 months late. But hopefully, with both of those wells in place, it'll be producing the full capacity of 3,500 acre feet. So Monterey One, in the Monterey One Board, we voted to send the Salinas weighted vote option 2 to all the participating members. So that will come back to our jurisdiction, back to our city council. Every council, every member jurisdiction has to approve this change to, this potential change to the JPA for it to be adopted. The option 2 is really what the majority of the board felt is the simplest option. It just takes the existing calculation for weighted votes in the JPA and just extends it. It just addresses the shortcomings of the JPA, which was that the JPA never accounted for Salinas to be over 100,000 people. It's now 160,000. Yeah, it's now 160,000 people. And so it just takes the same, all it does is it just extends that number out from 100,000 to 200,000 or whatever, and then uses the same calculation that all the other jurisdictions are applied to. So that'll be coming to us. We resolved the payment issue with Monterey, the Water Management District over the SEIR. The details, the formal terms will be agendized and made public in the next meeting. But the headlines are, is that there is, has been an agreement with the Water Management District to resolve this issue. And again, the details will come out to public in the next week's meeting. There was no Seaside Basin regular meeting nor TAC. But there will be both meetings next month. That's it.
All right, thank you. Louise? Did you want to say anything?
Oh, yes, of course. Most of my reports, most of the details are written and as part of the agenda packet. I did have a couple other things of notice. First of all, I want to bring the attention of our council and our citizens that Highway 218 from the junction of Route 1 in Seaside to the junction of Route 68 at the end of Delray Oaks is named for U.S. Army Private First Class Konrad O. D. Javier. It's named in memory of him, who at the age of 16, was killed in action in Kandahar Province, Afghanistan, on 19 December 2010. He was from Marina and a high school graduate from Seaside. I think that the signs are up. They have been up for a couple of months. And we need to be aware of the sacrifice that our young people, and some are not-so-young people, do for our country. I also want to make it understandable. There are, I believe, six memorial highway sections named for fallen soldiers from Monterey County, in Monterey County. These are approved by resolution by the state legislature, in this case, the state senate. But when the senate approves memorial highways, it approves the name of the highway. It does not give any funds for the signs. The signs are paid for by the family or donations from nonprofit organizations or a combination thereof. Just wanted to make people aware that we do have, and we should honor our fallen. And so we have Memorial Highway to one of our fallen in the city. And that if you have the opportunity and another, God forbid, highway gets named, please consider the fact that it's up to the family to find the funding to put the signs up. I would like to thank Kim Shirley and gang for the cleanup of the creek area. I do look forward, and please let me know when you schedule it. And I will be out there when the rest of the area is done. So the area from the Frog Pond to the shopping center, Stone Creek, that area seems to be somewhat neglected. I would love to, please let the whole homeowners association here at the Oaks know, because we will be out there to help you. I would like the city to consider in the future, maybe through the Planning Commission, an ordinance restricting the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Monterey recently passed such an ordinance. Pacific Grove and Carmel already have ordinances in place. And they're not only loud, but spew noxious gases. I have asked the homeowners association to coordinate with our landscape company to encourage them to move to battery-powered blowers. And I think that it's something that the city should continue, should look into, sorry. Finally, I want to say, I am German, but I grew up in Norwegian area of Wisconsin. So in Norwegian, it's mangatusentukk to Kim, which means "many thousand thanks" for all her work and all her happiness and good luck in your future. And I warn you, you will be busier in retirement than you ever were when you worked.
I plan on it.
That's all. Thank you. That's all, thank you.
I have a short report tonight for a change. The Seaside Sanitation meeting was canceled, and the Community Human Services, we had a great presentation on the Genesis House explaining all the services that they provide. And we voted to surplus two vehicles that are no longer in use. And the Casa de Noche Buena, that's where the Community Human Services and the Gathering for Women are coordinating their efforts. And it was supposed to be open in November of 2020, and it's currently about three weeks behind schedule, but they're hoping that they can make up some of that time. And Kim, I will miss you, your happy smiling face. It was always a joy to come into City Hall and see you. And thank you so much for all you have done for Delray Oaks. Love you.
Love you, too.
And that's my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's past my bedtime. Usually I'm at 5:00 AM. Just wanted to make that quick remark. I attended RTA and the Regional Taxi Authority, and we approved a contactless fare payment program, so that you just have to use your credit card, you don't have to touch anything. The bus on shoulder, which is also called the Surf Express, is set to get funding. And we called it the Surf Express. It had to be branded in order to get this money. But if you drive on Highway 1, like from, just for instance, from Marina to Seaside, you're going to start seeing buses on the side where the railroad tracks are, and they'll bypass all of the heavy traffic, which should encourage more people to use transit. It should improve air quality, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It'll enhance mobility, improve bike trail, the bicycle trail connections, and improve transit connections, because the buses get stuck in that traffic, and then people miss their connection. So that's moving forward quite quickly now. South County Operations and Maintenance Facility is receiving one of the first Build America Bureau Transportation and Innovation Act loan. So it's a very cheap loan, so that we can get operations and maintenance down in King City, so we can keep expanding to South County. We're looking at probably having delays in funding, federal funding next spring, just because of all the whole COVID-19. MST mobility is actually checking on its writers. So they've been calling people to make sure that they're okay, which I think MST is just so hands-on with the community. It's incredible. I'm so proud to sit on that board and to see all the things that they have done for our community during this whole crisis. We've had one positive case of COVID with MST. We've had two with the contractor who takes, and with that, I just want to say, Kim, we've been partners in crime the whole time. I think we've been together, you came right after I got on the city council, and Kim, we've had our ups and downs, we've had our laughs and our cries, and I am going to miss you so much. Thank you for everything that you've done. You're not going to get rid of me, just so you know.
I hope not.
Okay, thank you for everything that you've done. You are so, so invaluable, and we appreciate you, I do, for sure. I appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Kristin.
That's all I have to say.
All right. So every Monday afternoon, there's a county executive-level Zoom call. Attendees include supervisors, mayors, the county administrative officer, the county health officer, Monterey County sheriff, superintendent of schools, and others. A continual topic of discussion is, of course, COVID and its effects upon our county. Discussions also include updates on case numbers and testing numbers. Reporting from the state remains inconsistent, with sometimes larger numbers one day and few the next. There's a fairly new California system based on colors, with purple being the most restrictive as far as business activities. We've been in the purple zone since the system's inception. Unfortunately, we remain there, although our overall numbers are slightly decreasing. As we move from active fire issues, other than the Dolan Road, or the Dolan Fire, which is still being fought, we now discuss the work involved with the aftermath. Cleaning the toxic and hazard materials is quite complicated, involving California EPA and possibly FEMA. On October 27th, I attended a special mayor's and council member CAL FIRE, County Office of Emergency Services briefing and tour of the Toro Park CAL FIRE base camp. The briefing included details about the Carmel and River Fire at that time, evacuation and repopulation status, and law enforcement activities. We had an opportunity to review fire maps, tour the operations, and speak with the CAL FIRE team, who had come from all over the county, or excuse me, country. Mayor's meetings are back to once a month, also heavily focused on the pandemic and recent fire-related issues. Attended this sign ordinance committee meeting, where we are beginning to structure some changes. There was also a discussion about the boundaries, or the bounds of the committee. We were trying, we were created to propose a more user-friendly ordinance to the city council, and we do not have adjudicating authority. The recording of the meeting is on the city website. Also attended the Planning Commission meeting to hear their thoughts on the airport response letter, as well as Mayor Advisory Committees for Emergency Response met, again, to complete a flyer detailing best practices for evacuation. Very relevant right now. It is always important to be prepared. That will be distributed safely and with no contact soon. They are looking for funding to pay for copies. The Mayor's Advisory Committee for Arts met to discuss next steps while under shelter in place. Always on the agenda is a potential mural somewhere in the city, populating our Facebook page, and more stories of home. Keep an eye out for the next set about Martha Franco and her husband and former mayor, Robert Franco. Friends of a Royal Delray, like was discussed earlier, and the Mayor's Advisory Committee for Parks, both met to discuss the California Coastal Commission Annual Cleanup Day. Last Saturday, a group of DROers grabbed buckets and grabbers and picked up over eight buckets of trash. I had the section from Canyon Delray by Safeway, and it's amazing how many cigarette butts, plastic, and I even found an old pull tab. Thank you to everyone who came out to and shared their morning cleaning up our city. And Louise, there is discussion about having more of these. I was prepared to give testimony at the Special Coastal Commission in support of the staff conclusions, although CalAid withdrew their permit application the evening before. They can reply, reapply after six months. Lastly, yesterday, I met with the Central Coast Community Energy Team. Monterey Bay Community Power has changed its name with the addition of a plethora of new cities outside of the original Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Bonito counties. A few of those include San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, Galida, Solvang, and Pismo Beach. It's growing hugely. 3CE, as they're calling themselves, will become our primary electricity provider, with enrollment happening as early as January. There will be a rolling enrollment, say that twice, based on your meter read date. Solar customers will have a separate enrollment, which will occur closer to your true-up date. And what's exciting about shifting over to these folks is any net surplus compensation will go towards your true-up. We will finally be joining 10 million other Californias who enjoy cleaner electricity across our state. There is no nuclear in the portfolio, and during 2021, they will eliminate any and all hydro-produced energy as well. By 2025, 60% of their sources will be new projects, hopefully quite a few local. Look forward to, there's going to be four different letters that will be going out beginning in November with more details on the various options and the logistics. They have a call center that can answer any questions. And if you haven't had the chance, you can go ahead and visit and get more information on 3cenergy.org. That's it for me. So we're done with council reports. I want to acknowledge the correspondence in the packet, the MST Board meeting highlights, TAMC Board meeting highlights, Ambag, and the mosquito abatement agenda. On that, we're going to go into closed session. I'd like to open up any public comment on the closed session item, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, CMPS versus Fora. Any public comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. As per usual, I object to the closed session and the lack of reporting out of what is discussed. I'm fairly certain that everything that's discussed is not attorney-client privileged, and that much information discussed is a matter of public record. Secondly, I went to the courthouse yesterday and to report on the CMPS litigation, there is an order issued by the court on September 2nd ordering a briefing schedule conference, and that's scheduled for October 6th at 9:00 AM in Department 14 at the Monterey courthouse down here. Furthermore, for your information, in one of the moving papers filed by CMPS, it is said that there have been multiple settlement discussions to date with representatives of the parties and their council. The settlement discussions are ongoing. Delray Oaks has promulgated discovery and petitioner, this CMPS, and Delray Oaks are discussing proceeding via mediator or other facilitated settlement process. So there you go. If you wanted to know what's going on with the litigation, that I don't think our council would disclose to us, that's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Dino?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to highlight for the record, there was a lot of reference in the discussion earlier in public, in open session, about the 4.63-acre city parcel and equating it to the nature preserve. And that was certainly stated by CMPS, but it was also repeated by many others. And I just want to state for the record that that is an absolutely unsettled matter, and one we are engaged in settling, but that it not be left unaddressed on the public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, I'm seeing no hands. We will adjourn to closed session, and we will come out and report out when we're done.
So Madam Mayor, if I might, just a quick report out?
Yeah, we need, let's go ahead, it's late.
Everybody's coming. Okay, all right. So the California Native Plant Society versus Fora lawsuit was discussed. An update was given to council. The city attorney was provided direction, but no reportable action was taken.
All right. Our next meeting date is Tuesday, October 27, 2020, at 6:00 PM. On that, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Everybody.